City of Lamarc, uh, city council regular agenda of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Lamarc, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, beginning at six P M in council chambers at eleven oh nine B by Uro Lamarc, Texas. As well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to section five, five, one dot one, two, seven, B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer in the form of the Lamarc City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B by Uro Lamarc, Texas. This location will be open to the public and a meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. Council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. Now, the meeting has been called to order. Uh, Gus, who would you, uh?
I can do the roll call, Mayor.
Gus, would you do the roll call today, please?
Yes, uh, Mayor.
President.
Councilwoman District A.
Present.
Councilman District B.
Uh, but here.
Councilman District C.
Present.
And Councilman District D.
Present. Thank you, Gus. Let the record reflect that Ms. Nance, who is our city clerk, is, uh, uh, in this meeting. She's in attendance, uh, via Zoom. Gus, would you speak to, uh, her ability to, uh, uh, participate via, via Zooms? Refresh our memory.
Sure, uh, Kiera is a staff member. Um, she is free to participate in this meeting via Zoom. Obviously, any questions that come up, she's available to answer, and I'm available as well, like, for example, like the roll call, um, to answer any questions that may come up that either one of, either of us answer. And then Kiera is obviously online, taking notes, and will prepare the minutes accordingly.
Very good. We just wanted to make sure because she is the clerk of record.
Exactly.
That the audience understood.
Yes, yes. She is online, taking and taking notes.
Thank you. Very good. Let's move to invocation and pledge. Uh, tonight, I'd like to ask, uh, City Manager Caesar Garcia to lead us in our invocation, uh, followed by our council member James Ross to lead us in our pledge. Uh, no, he's going to introduce. Thank you. Mr. Ross will introduce our.
Mike Caballero from VFW Post eight, two, four, eight is our chaplain to lead us in the pledge.
Very good. Let's stand.
Thank you, partners. Thank you all of our supreme beings for allowing us to gather here today. We, uh, we hope that we can do so safely and in the accordance of our city rules. For the betterment of our city residents, we ask this in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Welcome. We need you at the, at the post, yes, sir. So the folks at home can hear you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Certainly, we're proud to have the presence of the VFW, the local VFW here with us tonight. Proclamations, uh, National First Responder Day, item four, National First Responder Day. If you are a first responder, uh, I would invite you to come up, uh, before us at this time.
Welcome. Yeah, it's, it's right here. Welcome.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Where are you? I believe you said something to the effect of, this is, uh, uh, our first responder team, which, uh, makes us believe that they're more than just fire and police officers in this group.
The idea is such is to make sure that we recognize not only our fire and our police, but we also take a moment to recognize our first responders in the form of, of our emergency management. Kyle, if you can also approach, as well as our Public Works, uh, Department, who are here for the betterment of the city and are the ones that do first respond in case of any emergency.
Very good, very good. Let's give these gentlemen, these ladies, little ladies here, let's give these gentlemen here a round of applause. And certainly, certainly, as they stand, they stand in representation of those, uh, female members of this great, great team. And so we wanted to acknowledge this, uh, because it's important as a coastal city, uh, we wanted to acknowledge this, uh, because it's important as a community to know, uh, that we are safe, uh, and that there are, uh, measures that are being taken, uh, at every turn to continue to ensure our safety, even in an emergency or natural disaster. It's Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarc proclamation, whereas the safety and well-being of our communities depend on the bravery and dedication of first responders, including firefighters, police officers, emergency medical personnel, and other emergency service workers. And whereas these individuals selflessly risk their lives every day to protect and serve others, often in life-threatening situations, and whereas the contributions of first responders extend beyond emergency response to accomplish community engagement, education, support during times and support during times of crisis. And whereas recognizing the vital role of first responders fosters appreciation for their service and strengthens the bond between them and the communities they serve. Whereas on this day, we honor and celebrate the commitment, sacrifice, and unwavering spirit of first responders. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council, by virtue of the authority vested by the city of Lamarc, Texas, do hereby proclaim October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, as National First Responders Appreciation Day. The City of Lamarc can encourage all citizens to recognize the dedication of our first responder to express gratitude for their unwavering, unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Testimony whereof, witness my hand, seal the City of Lamarc, Texas. This twenty-fifth day of October, twenty twenty four, keep bale, Mayor. Again, let's give these, uh, first responders a round of applause. By virtue of, I believe, being the highest ranking member of the Police Department here, uh, and also being the closest to me in proximity. Deputy Chief Wagner, did you want to respond on behalf of these great men and women in this great organization?
No, I just appreciate everybody we have, and I couldn't agree more. It's a team effort with all departments.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Tonight is also National, uh, Women's Veterans Recognition Week. Are there any persons here? There it is. All right. Hey, how you doing, my friend? Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Ross?
My good friend, James Ross, also city council member.
I'd like for you to lead this discussion. Certainly, you are involved in the, uh, VFW, and you all have been part of that organization. I'll stand here and support you.
So, also of the mayor from the City of Lamarc proclamation, whereas throughout history, women have been among the patriots who have defended our land in liberty from every enemy and have held positions in the military from serving as soldiers, nurses, among many other roles in times of both war and peace. Whereas the number of women service members is ever-growing with a current demographic of nearly seventeen point five percent of all active-duty service members being women, and whereas women have played an integral role in the service of our nation, contributing to their talent, skills, and leadership across various sectors, including military, public service, community organizations, and volunteer efforts. And whereas National Women in Service Week celebrates the accomplishment of women who have dedicated their lives to the service of others, recognizing their sacrifices and the barriers they have overcome, and whereas it is essential to celebrate and promote the role of women in service, encouraging all members of our community to recognize and appreciate their contributions, and now it be resolved that we, the mayor and city council, do hereby proclaim, uh, proclaim November eighth and fourteenth, twenty twenty four, it's National Women Veterans Recognition Week. In testimony whereas, and witness the hand and seal of Lamarc, this is, this twenty-fifth day of October, twenty twenty four.
Give them a round of applause. Uh, we will say the, uh, uh, council previous to this council, uh, has, uh, reached out to this great VFW, uh, and we started, uh, a Veterans Breakfast. Uh, we had the first one in our farm station out west. Uh, the second one was at the VFW Hall, and we want to continue these great partnerships with veterans of our community, uh, and we've built on that. Uh, we have been working, uh, in Mr. Ross's district, in stepping. We've been working to develop this concept, uh, that we call Hero's Village. Uh, and this will be a concept of, uh, a housing development, uh, that will specifically speak to the housing needs of our military community, whether they be disabled, active military, or retired military. And so this council, uh, councils previous to this council have been proud, uh, in representing, uh, and in engaging our military community and military families to this community, and so we're honored to have you here tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. And if I may, uh, be able to speak a little bit on some of the history of this, the proclamation is, is a great testament of what this city has done to recognize the accomplishments and the contribution that women have had in our service. But I would also like to, I'm a big history buff, and I like to speak about history and how it has shaped not only this city, but this state, but this country as a whole. And there have been ten women throughout the course of our, our great republic's history that have been awarded some of the highest awards in the military. Nine of them were Silver Stars, or should I say, three of them were the precursor to the Silver Stars. Jane Rignell, Lenny LaCron, and Irene Robar. Their citation was known as the Citation Star, which was the precursor to the Silver Stars. They were awarded these, at these awards for actions during the Great War or World War One. All three served as nurses on the front lines in France. So that just goes to show you that they weren't in the back, in the tents. They were out there out front, sacrificing their well-being for the lives of fellow Americans and also our allies. Next war we're going to talk about, there were four individuals all in the same location. Second Lieutenant Ellen Ainsworth, First Lieutenant Mary Roberts, Second Lieutenant Elaine Rowe, and Second Lieutenant Rita Rourke. All four awarded the Silver Star, which is the third highest award for valor that the military offers. All four were nurses in World War Two. All four of these women were known as the Angels of Anzio, which was one of the most brutal battles in the Mediterranean or the Mediterranean on Italy. Next, we're going to go to a more current one. Sergeant Leanne Hester, Silver Star for actions during Operation Iraqi Freedom as a military police. First female ever to be awarded the Silver Star while in direct conflict with the enemy. She was the first female to actively engage the enemy in armed conflict and receive the award. No other female up to that point in time had ever accomplished that. And yes, it is an accomplishment for, for women. And last Silver Star recipient, Specialist Monica Lynn Brown. Silver Star for actions during Operation Iraqi Freedom as a combat medic. So as you can see, the first seven were all medics. Or eight were all medics and one was in military police. But there is one, one woman that most people don't even know about, who has ever been awarded the Medal of Honor. And that young lady was Doctor Mary Walker. She was awarded the Medal of Honor in the Civil War. It was awarded to her in November of eighteen sixty-five. However, due to public persona or public image of women in military, it was rescinded in nineteen seventeen. And it was reinstated again in nineteen seventy-seven. Civil War was controversial in that she was listed as a civilian for military years. Military people can, can achieve these awards. Civilian people can achieve these awards, only military. What's also amazing is that she was held captive as a prisoner of war by the Confederacy for many years. And it was only upon a prisoner swap that she gained her freedom from the Confederacy. But she was portrayed as a spy because of the simple fact that she would go out on the battlefield and render aid not only to Union soldiers, but to Confederate soldiers as well. She put her well-being, her safety on the line for everyone on the battlefield. She was not a nurse. She is the first female surgeon ever to be reported in the military. She was a surgeon by training and education. And she is still the only woman ever to be awarded the Medal of Honor. Now, there have been numerous women who have served that were awarded the Bronze Star, which is the fourth highest award for valor for under, for actions undertaken during periods of conflict. And their achievements and accomplishments are not to be belittled or forgotten about. It's just that if we were to talk about all those, we would be here for several hours. So that just gives you a scope of what women have done in our military. And they have made numerous contributions, not only to this country, but to the military as well. So, women continue to lead their marks in military by ushering in change and breaking down barriers and stereotypes by virtue of their tenacity and their courage. The skills and mindset they display time and time again have given credits to this undeniable fact. So let us not only acknowledge their contributions, but let us never forget their willingness and sacrifice to push and to serve. Also, let us thank them for their service and never forget that they are valued, respected, revered, and loved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Thanks very much, sir. And thank you. Mr. Garcia, I believe you are in charge of this presentation, so we'll yield the floor to you, sir.
Mr. Daniel Watts. Right here, from the center of the hall. Davion is a member of our, um, fellow work side and, and presumably our utilities team. Rick, I will give you the honor to please, uh, share the accomplishments with Mr. Davion.
Uh, yes, um, the city is very fortunate to have Mr. Davion Watts as one of our employees and a treatment plant operator. Since February of twenty seventeen, he knows the city well, um, rich streets, parks, waterline. Ended up over at the treatment plant, Bert LeShannon, uh, about four years ago. We recently promoted him into being lead operator for the treatment plant, so he always. Will take care of the new thirty-eight, thirty-eight, thirty-six million dollar treatment plant when it gets built, so got some future, future responsibilities. But, um, Shannon, Shannon Bro, uh, committed a nomination for him for plant operator new, who, uh, thanks to our utility association. Fortunate that he will win. Congratulations.
There you are. Is that more? Hello, Davion.
Oh. Nah, I'm, uh, I appreciate it, uh, for, um, thanks, thank you, Shannon. He's, uh, been a very paramount for me, uh, getting to where I'm at. I'd also like to thank everybody who's held me on along the way. Uh, Mark is a special place. It's just, uh, I appreciate them for giving me the opportunity.
All right, man. That's good.
Danny, could you approach?
As we're sharing hardware, I'll also ask these two gentlemen to help me with these two. Shannon, turn the face to front here.
Shannon's also been distinguished for a lot of his, uh, recent leadership. Rick?
Uh, yes, Shannon, uh, recently, um, passed a test, which only one percent of plant operators in the states have been able to do. To actually have the top license for T C Q for both water treatment and wastewater treatment. Uh, he was recognized for that through the Texas Water Utility Association down in Corpus Christi. So that's award number one. He, he came to us, uh, actually, Shannon started three days after I started, so, uh, about three years ago almost, and, uh, before that, he worked, uh, contracted work, but he took care of the plant contract before we hired him at the full-time. He now oversees water, wastewater, sewer water. Uh, we put a lot of, uh, possibility on him, but, uh, this double A, double A operator is a future recognition for his accomplishment. Um, on top of that, we recently, recently completed a, um, water dealership, uh, program through Water Environment Federation. Um, there was like two hundred almost two hundred applicants. He was one of forty-eight that, uh, was actually selected to, uh, pass that. He got a trip to Washington, D.C., down to New Orleans, and, uh, a lot, a lot of work, a lot of study. So congratulations about on getting that, uh, recognition and passing all that initial training. So we need leaders like Shannon to, uh, to move the city forward. Thank you.
Shannon, was there anything on the group?
Yeah, same opportunity, Shannon.
No, it's just, I mean, I've been here, like, uh, Rick said, about three years. I was working as a city prior for a operating company before they, uh, they went in-house with operations. I've been around about five years. I live in the city. It really has been, uh, just, I really enjoy working here. It's been a lot of, uh, I will, I will say a lot of fun. There has been some fun times, but that's probably not something to say when you're talking about work, but but I've really enjoyed working here. I enjoy my coworkers. Uh, I enjoy the citizens here. I'm a part of this, a part of y'all, so just, that's it. Pretty good.
Wonderful, wonderful news. Moving on to item five. Moving on to item five. Citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council limited to three minutes. Wishing to speak to get the mayor, the presiding officer, your full legal name, and address, and item you wish to speak about. Lines with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you're participating via phone. If you're participating, uh, via a Zoom on a smartphone, tablet, or computer, there should be a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen. Uh, if you are participating in person, uh, when your name is called, you may approach the center aisle, uh, and you will be heard. Tell if any person's online wishing to speak.
No.
No person's online wishing to speak. Is there a Bruce? Welcome, Bruce. Name and address for the record.
Uh, my name's Bruce. I'm from, uh, Galveston, Ireland, actually. Um, I wouldn't mind giving my name and address except for the fact that one of your council members has a habit of doxing people and showing up at their homes and, uh, taking pictures of things and carrying things on beyond a professional manner, so I'd rather not. I did notice that we had National First Responder Day today. I think that's great. Um, that also links into the reason that I'm here today. And that's because I was looking at a conversation that was being had between a councilman who has now left and some other people, and he asked them to come down to the, the police department to have a conversation with them. And that, and he told him that he was always there to come down at any time and to ask for him, Joseph Lowery, badge number one, eight, seven. Aside from him going to people's homes and taking pictures and doxing people online, um, somebody asked who he was. I mentioned he was a councilman, and then he, he proceeded to put out my personal information online. He is presenting himself as a police officer and inferring by telling people to come down to the police station that he is always there and to ask for him, badge number one, eight, seven. Take that as you may. In everywhere but Lamarc, apparently, it is illegal to present yourself as a police officer. But for some reason, this has been allowed to go on, and this isn't a hidden thing. This is in public view. And to try and get transparency from people when you have somebody openly attacking citizens and claiming to be a police officer, brandishing firearms on his Facebook page after having to fight so long to get them back because the government obviously sees an issue with this. I, I think it's something very concerning. I think it's something you guys need to look at. You know, when the officer, when all the first responders were up here, he wasn't up here. He's not a first responder. Is that stolen valor, or is it just bigotry, or is it just intimidation? Whatever it is, identifying as Lamarc Police Officer Joseph Lowery, number one, eight, seven, is a crime.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Robert Harvey, Horvy?
Yeah, first I'd like to say, um, it is my First Amendment right to redress my grievances with my government, and I think it's disgusting that he walks out when he sees us about to speak. And I think the city attorney is trash too, because I just spoke to him about it before the meeting, and he won't recognize it. It's a First Amendment right. He told me sue the city if he wants, so I think you're trash for that. This is my public comment. A lot of people have reached out to me recently, and they're all saying the same thing. Joseph Lowery is a bully. He is harassing and threatening people online and posting people's address, addresses, and sending people pictures of their homes, their vehicles, and their loved ones' homes and vehicles to intimidate and harass them. I believe what these people are, are saying, because he has used these same tactics against me to try to intimidate and harass me. The city is aware of what's going on and hasn't done anything. The city needs to do something before something bad happens. I've always been open and honest about my past, unlike Councilman Lowery. I even admitted my past at the last city council meeting to the whole world while being livestreamed. So a couple of days ago, Joseph Lowery posts a fifteen-year-old mugshot of me on his Facebook account and writes a fictional book about me and my, me and my life. Then his wife shared it twenty-five times, which seems desperate to me. Quite an imagination Joseph Lowery has. He definitely has a future in writing fictional books after his political career is over, which should be over real soon. Newsflash, Joseph Lowery, nobody cares about my criminal record. I'm just a guy that makes YouTube videos. You're a city councilman. People want to know your convictions for manufacturing meth and so on and so on. People want to see. People want to see your mugshots, not mine. So why don't you post those, Joseph Lowery? And get your wife to share them twenty-five times. This is a matter of great public interest and the taxpayers deserve to know. Also in Joseph Lowery's fictional book that he wrote on Facebook the other day, he alleges that he's been receiving death threats and he says he believes they're coming from me and my friends. I don't think anyone believes Mr. Lowery and I've proven numerous times he's a liar. And I think the community already knows he's a liar before I proved it. Why doesn't he post these messages if they're true? This man is such a liar and has so many fake accounts on Facebook that my guess is he's sending these threats to himself and playing the victim. He is not a victim. He is the suspect. I did do a public records request today requesting these alleged threats and all of his e-mails using specific key words that he is known to use when harassing me and others online. So stay tuned for that. Uh, I'm going to get back to some of the screenshots that he sent me that I didn't get to finish last week. Right here, he says, I hope you go to jail. Then he says, you're breaking the law by recording cops so you can jerk off to your videos later on. And, uh, he said, referring to me, he says, your criminal history was sent to me by law enforcement out of state because they seen you attack me in my department. I was warned about your mental stability and ongoing criminal charges across the Southern United States. I have no pending charges anywhere in the world right now. I have beat everything Texas has laid down on me in three years.
Mister, uh, Robert, thank you.
I got one more of it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Robert Mitchich. Welcome, Robert.
Mayor, Council, Robert Mitchich, twenty-four, North Curlew. Uh, am I allowed to use the name of the councilperson in this ethics complaint?
Well, I, I advise of the rules. If you believe that you have a constitutional right to, to not, uh, uh, follow those rules, then so be it.
I mean, what, uh, do I use the name or not? You're allowing other people to.
Yes. Again, I've given rules. If you feel like you have, you have a constitutional right to have freedom of speech beyond those rules, you're welcome to do that.
I'll abide by your rules, Mayor. Uh, this is an ethics complaint that happened on, um, March nineteenth at the Lamarck Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, when it held an open meeting at, uh, twenty-nine oh eight Cedar Drive in Lamarck. Uh, this complaint, uh, was an open meeting and others came to this meeting that were not members, my wife included. Uh, a councilperson, uh, attended the meeting late, uh, to the speaker's presentation. But with the meeting concluding, the, the police academy president called for members for a group picture. This was members only, did not include my wife or other individuals that were not part of that academy. Uh, it is at this point that this councilperson, uh, wanted to be in the picture and was denied and went full frontal assault against the president and the board yelling and complaining racial discrimination. This person, it was horrible in actions and the claims and was out of control, claiming the whole organization was racist. This person even began blabbering and calling by name another Lamarck police officer, shouting over and over that he murdered a young black man. And then again, uh, shouting those verbal assaults, then went after a lieutenant of the DPS from the previous week's Crime Stoppers meeting. And how that presentation was so racist and how he was racist. This went on and on. Y'all all have this copy and you're going to review it this, this evening. But when I tried to quell things down, then I was attacked. And it was about, I'm not a Christian if I didn't believe it was racist. When this DPS officer was trying to explain the problems that they face at the border with trying to process people. And this went on and on. My wife had to leave the meeting because she was afraid that she was going to say something or do something because it so upset her. And others started leaving. It would not stop. What I asked for in this is censure and I asked for a public written apology to all the officers and all the board members of that organization and to myself and to my wife. And folks, there were comments made at the last meeting that someone was being denied, that this person was being denied, uh, membership in there because of some political march. That's not it. This is it. And I asked for you to make sure that this is addressed tonight. I asked for the censure and I asked for the apology. And as I've said in here, I want nothing to do with this person outside of city business.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Point of information, Mayor.
Wait, 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 wait. What information do you have to offer? I'm not asking you to give the point. What is it in reference to?
Point of information is that I will deal with that line in second possession with the council.
Okay. Okay. I got you. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I believe that was it for our, uh, citizens' request for hearing. Now we're in item six minutes, six one, regular city council minutes. Uh, six twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel, are there any corrections or omissions? Hearing number, call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, new business item presented to council for discussion and possible action. Seven one, resolution number letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero four nine, voting for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, Board of Directors for Galveston County Appraisal District. Uh, Ms. Nance, do you want to give us guidance on this?
Not necessarily, sir. I, this is the first time I believe that you all received this one. I do believe we have a meeting for it is two. So if you don't have, uh, interest in this time.
Hey, you, Ms. Ms. Nance. Ms. Nance. Your correct, your connection is not as strong.
Lamarck has the right to vote for, um, uh, members of the Board of Directors of the Central Appraisal District. What you all have attached, um, to the agenda is, um, the, uh, the ballot. So we would just need to know, um, who you all want to vote for. You have a number of votes. Um, if you bear with me for a few minutes or a few seconds, I will tell you how many votes the city of Lamarck has. The city of Lamarck has forty-five votes. Um, there are a total of five thousand votes. So, um, y'all are free to, it appears, you are free to cast all of your votes for one person or break them up, um, as you all see fit.
Very good. Counsel, historically, we have, we have cast all of our votes, uh, obviously with five thousand, uh, total, uh, behind one candidate to maximize our voting power. Um, floor is open for nominations of one or more than one, uh, person to fill this, uh, this position as, uh, the Board of Directors. The floor is open for nomination.
Oh, and if I may, sorry, one other thing, the ballot has to be completed by December the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So we will have another meeting between now and that time if council is not ready to vote tonight.
Counsel, I, 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 I need either a table very quickly or I need a nomination very quickly.
I, uh, make a motion to table this till November eighth.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Let's move. Any opposed? Thank you. Let's move to item seven two. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero five zero, authorizing submission of application to Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority for the SB two-two-four catalytic converter program. In a nutshell, uh, Mr. Garcia, can you, uh, explain?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, this is the same funding agency we recently received, uh, funding from. In this round, we're, uh, approaching an eighty-twenty match, uh, excuse me, eighty-twenty fund, eighty funding, twenty percent match. Uh, the items include some police units, uh, as well as an ATV. We're also seeking twenty-five thousand to fund, uh, some of our overtime to fulfill some of these catalytic converter, um, amounts. Uh, total application would be four seventy, match would be ninety-four thousand, should we be funded.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
I, I, Mayor.
Uh, give us, uh, Kyle. Give us, give us five minutes, please. Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, I need some clarity, uh, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir.
I, I recall the police chief and yourself informing me that we were no longer going to be doing the catalytic, um, converter program. But that the auto task force was going to be undertaking that.
We are partnering with the county's auto task force to conduct those. Yes, sir.
So this grant is exclusively for Lamarck.
This grant would be exclusively for Lamarck based on the qualifying events of the grant application.
But it will no longer be, uh, as reading over, it's, uh, for overtime. It's for some staffing as well, but it's not in anything having to do with actually embarking upon what we did previously, uh, on the, um,
On the etching?
And the etching program.
No, sir. It would not be anything more specific than that.
Thanks.
Any, uh, any additional questions for Mr. Garcia?
And again, this would only be an application. We would need to apply and then subsequently be awarded and then accept the award at that time.
Any additional questions, Mr. Garcia? Mr. Garcia, help me to understand, this is, uh, this grant is entitled catalytic converter grant program. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does that necessarily indicate that, uh, the available grant funding is limited to some sort of a catalytic converter operation?
So there's a limit as to what we can apply for. Um, so we tried to find what aligned with our needs to what the, uh, funding may allow. But it is not specific to just catalytic converters.
What I guess what I'm asking, just so that I can move through this quickly, is in this, in this catalytic converter grant, in, in, in whatever, uh, resource that is, whether it be federal or, or what have you, uh, is, are those monies earmarks for primarily or exclusively catalytic converter operations or is this just the name of the program?
It is the name of the program, but it also sets aside funds that are subsidiary to those activities.
So four hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of funds that are associated with a catalytic converter program?
Not a program, but activities, for example, patrol cars that would, having more patrol cars on the street would help us to detain folks or to prevent some of those activities.
And so that's what I think we need to articulate more. If that's what, what that is, uh, I think that we need to, in this meeting, in this setting, we need to have you explain four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, what, what are all those monies going to be earmarked toward? And please be detailed.
Certainly. Um, to be brief, uh, we want to go with five police cars. Each car costs approximately eighty-five thousand dollars. That equates about four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, there's an ATV being requested at a cost of approximately twenty thousand dollars. And then approximately twenty-five thousand dollars for overtime for police to cover some of the overtime that would be needed for these extra activities.
Okay. So four hundred and twenty-five thousand is for police cars. Where did we leave off, uh, when we, when we completed the budget cycle?
Yes, sir.
Where did we leave off as far as the number of new patrol cars still needed? Not the number that are, aren't in service because we have cars that have not been put in service. But I'm asking about the number of, uh, additional needs for new cars. What's that number?
I'm, I'm looking at the back of the room. I want to say it was a minimum of five, but I think depending on need, minimum of five, but I believe it was actually higher due to soon there being end of life that could go up to eight to ten. Because some of them were new cars that we needed for the K nine and so on and so forth.
Now, la- last question, because I think I'm running out of the old time. I, I said, Kyle, so I'll just ask you this last question.
Yes, sir.
You said that this, did you say to, Mayor Protem asked you if the catalytic converter program would be absorbed by the auto crimes task force? And you said yes.
The activity of etching the, the actual, um, catalytic converters that the program that we started, where we would paint them and etch the, the VIN number to the catalytic converter to prevent the actual theft, or actually not the theft, but the actual sale. That program is one that we have partnered with the auto crime task force to take that at a bigger level.
So that is the partnership that you're referring to?
Correct.
But there is no partnership as it relates to this opportunity here.
That is correct.
There is none.
No, sir.
And so what is the match again?
The match is ninety-four thousand.
And where would that match come from?
It would have to come from general funds, sir.
Thank you. Any, any more questions? Hearing none, I will, uh, I will entertain a motion.
We'll approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I will say that I am normally opposed to grant funding that, uh, that requires a match. Uh, but I believe that five police cars, uh, certainly in, in, uh, in the grand scheme of things, uh, to leverage monies to be able to acquire those for, uh, our community members and so that our officers be efficient, even more efficient than they are. I think that's a good trade-off. Uh, question for those that are, last question, maybe you can answer this. So that we won't have to go over this again. What will we be using the ATV for?
So the ATV is used primarily if we need to have any type of alternate location. For example, Bayou Fest at one of the parks, uh, whether it be parade operations, street closures, things of that nature.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you. I will, uh, uh, call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven three, resolution number letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero, uh, five one. Approving to apply and accept the grant award, uh, for the game time grant application for an all-inclusive playground at Highland Bayou Park. Mr. Garcia, in a nutshell.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, some residents have requested the fact that we do not have an inclusive playground within the city. Uh, Parks Board took that challenge, uh, found funding source available to the same, uh, funder that allowed us to get the three playgrounds about a year and a half ago. Um, sought for, uh, grant funding opportunities. So this is in, in tie-in, a request for application and acceptance of the grant. Uh, the grant total is ninety-two thousand, five hundred, twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. The share is actually twenty-five, seventy-five, so it is a much higher share. However, it is covered in the, uh, park CIP funds should you, uh, allow us to move forward with this, uh, grant and subsequent request, approval, and then moving forward with the project. This would be located at Highland Bayou Park.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Garcia on seven three? I will say, I think it's a great move to be inclusive and to, uh, make sure that we have amenities for every, uh, citizen. So that's a good thing. I will entertain a motion approved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven four, resolution number R letter, uh, resolution number letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero five two, accepting a grant award for the Patrick Leahy bulletproof vest, uh, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred, thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cent. Mr. Garcia, nutshell?
Yes, sir. Um, this grant is, is, is one that you authorized our, uh, application for back in June. We were awarded, uh, on the twenty-sixth of September. Uh, the city is required to have a fifty percent match. This is for bulletproof vest. But we have petitioned is to use that match through four vests that have already been purchased and we're seeking that approval. So it is a one-to-one or a fifty-fifty match. However, they will give us credit for some that we've already purchased. In addition to that, we're looking to see if we can use the match to come from some of the ARPA funds that are also requesting some of those vests. So it could technically be a zero cost to us if we're allowed to use those funds. Worst case scenario, it will be half of that, which is roughly less than thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay. So you said this is a one-to-one match. So that's roughly about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Actually, it is a, it is half of that. So it would be, um, thirteen thirteen.
Thirteen thirteen?
Correct. So they, so in this grant, they include the award as, as part of the total.
Okay, okay.
So that's, that's how they.
And then you said that we had already purchased some that may be eligible to meet this.
To meet our, our part of the match. To meet our, our part of the match.
And then you said that we have, the council has approved additional through ARPA funds?
Through ARPA funds.
And that might, might satisfy this requirement.
Yes, we will submit all those for requirement for our match to see if they allow that to happen.
Very good. Counsel, any further questions? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Accepting grant, uh, I'm sorry. Car before the heart, seven, five, resolution number letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero five, three. Accepting a grant award, uh, for five hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars from the cops grant to hire two full-time police officers. Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, uh, on May of twenty twenty-four, uh, council approved us to apply for an application through the cops hiring grant that we refunded before for police officers. Um, the city was, uh, put in application for two new officers, uh, for two, uh, full-time officers. At the time, it was anticipated we'd go fifty percent on those. Uh, we're excited to announce that not only have been, have we, we've been awarded the amount, but, uh, but we also applied for a waiver. So as a result of that waiver and that application. We will receive these two officers at one hundred percent funding for the first three years.
Very good. That's a, that's a good move. Good move. Let's, again, let's keep score. Uh, before we enter, enter the budget process, we had forty-five sworn officers that were, uh, assigned to patrol. Total, total. Who does that exclude? The police chief obviously, and who else? So police chief down forty-five, uh, how many, so how many patrol officers did we have? Twenty-four. And so the, through the budget cycle, through the budget process, we added.
By the end of this fiscal year will be four, four positions.
So this council added four more positions.
That are staggered throughout the year.
And then this grant will award two more.
Will grant two, yes.
Right. And so, and so we're continuing to, again, to explain to our community to move forward. We're doubling, we're tripling down. On the idea that Lamarck, uh, is a safe city, uh, and that we will continue to be safer, uh, until we reach our goal. So we just wanted to make sure our community members are aware of what this means when we are discussing this item tonight. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Garcia? As it relates to seven, five. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, six. Awarding RFP twenty-four dash zero five disaster consulting and grant administrative services. Awarding contracts to Grant Works and DCMC Partners for Disaster Consulting and Grant Administration Services. Mr. Garcia.
I'd like to defer to Kyle on this, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, this has to do with, uh, hiring, uh, we did the RFP for grant, uh, FEMA services, uh, having a PA. So public assistance. So this is a firm that will come in, um, and help us. Uh, handle FEMA on their timelines and keep us on track so that we can seek the most reimbursement possible. Uh, this, I brought this to y'all a few months back, originally as a ninety-day executive contract, just to get under, uh, after barrel to get some help with FEMA support. Um, and this is just a RFP that we went out to continue those services over the next several years. Three years with the option to renew, uh, one year, I believe, uh, two more times.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions for, uh, uh, Mr. Hunter on seven, six?
I.
Mayor Protem.
Clarity, um. If I understand this, we're contracting with two companies.
Uh, so how I wrote this up was that we can have one as a primary and if something happens with that primary company, if some, if they're unable to feel their obligations to us. Then we won't have to go out for another RFP because we'll already have named a second one that we can put in their place.
So Grant Works is the primary?
Correct.
With the, have we ever, I know we've done the business with Grant Works, but with the second one, I'm not familiar with. DCMC.
Uh, that was a, uh, vendor that submitted RFP that, uh, after reading through all the RFPs, um, they were graded high. So it was somebody that's, you know, had knowledge and this is their, their business per se, is to help with public assistance. Um, so. As far as just picking them, you know, we, we wanted to be fair, uh, about the process. And like I said, in the grading process, they came out in second. So we're naming them as the secondary and we can always evaluate that. This doesn't necessarily force us to use just those companies.
Just last question. Help me out. Give me a couple of cities that GCMC does business with.
Good question. It should be in the packet. I'll look real quick and see. I want to say the city of Galveston uses them. I think that's where it's.
Okay. You can get that to me.
For time's sake, if you'd like, I can get that list to you.
Yeah.
After.
For, for a time's sake, you're stipulating that there are several other municipalities that have, that actually use this company?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Good deal. Any, uh, any more questions on item seven, six?
So DMC Partners, they're going to be used as a secondary. Do, what, what is our, and you may have to get, and I've asked for this before. What, what are some of, are we using any hub, hub companies at all?
So in, in the RFP. Space of legal, uh, you know, we, we put out a RFP, anybody is allowed to submit their RFP. Um, as far as a hub vendor, they can submit as well, just depending on how they, they fell in the grading. Uh, a lot of, I mean. They are used primarily as a, kind of like a, how we would use, uh. For grants, companies for grants. This is somebody that has a department. Um, I know in talking with Grant Works, they have a department that is, that is strictly FEMA. Based. Meaning that that's what they do.
Right. So, uh, Caesar, could you give me a list of our, our hub? And I've asked for that before and I still have yet to receive that. A list of every hub that we've used, if we've ever used one. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Excuse me, any, any further questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, seven. Uh, CWSRF area of impact, considering an area of impact for the, uh, year twenty-five Texas Water Development Board. Clean water state revolving fund loan.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, we were asked at the last council meeting to bring back what the areas would be for this loan should we be funded. Uh, this is a breakdown of that. It would be a combination of engineering. Pipeline rehabilitation on the, on the west side sewer system, which is about five miles. Approximately three miles of pipeline rehabilitation on the east side. So for both sides and also they continue into the manhole restoration of, of approximately an additional two hundred manholes. Um, this would be the breakdown of what that would be. This was asked of us at the last meeting. This is more for information, not an act.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Is that, is that, uh, at a place, Kyle, that we can, we can put that up?
Oh. Yes, uh, go to page. Yes, sir. Right there. All right, just go up one page. I'm sorry. That's the subsequent page. Yes, nope, nope. You're right there. You're done. Thank you. Bullet points one through six, breakdown, the complete project scope.
So, so, uh, at a previous meeting, last meeting, meeting before last, council gave you approval to, uh, apply for.
Yes, sir.
A ten million dollar loan through this revolving. Water, uh, uh, financing mechanism, uh, the Water Development Board.
Yes.
And you are saying that in response to council, uh, asking you, what would we be using these monies for? This is your response.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Is that, okay. So now we have it where our folks at home can see that. Just wanted to, I want to make sure that people can see what you are proposing.
Absolutely.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Garcia for seven, seven? Mayor Protem.
Rick, you and I have been talking about this area of. Of, um. Of our construction, the, the, um. Under the project scope. We talk about, let, let's focus first on the manhole covers and. You know, they've come up, we got funding under the GLO for those. Uh, that was a hurricane, um. Uh, I forget the name of the hurricane now, Harvey, funding. And then, um. The. It, would you please explain to all of us once again, the. The complexity of the replacement of the manholes. I, I had a very simple vision in my mind, being a layperson as to the manholes. And what we're, what the nature of the work that's being done to improve our system.
So regarding the manholes, there's, there's a three, a few things that we're focusing on. Most of the issues with manholes are letting rainwater into our system. So it comes back to reducing INI. The INI happens normally thirty percent, up to thirty to forty percent of INI happens at the upper part of a manhole. There's adjustment rings that sit underneath. The actual manhole cover, the steel cover that you see on the street or off on the side of the road. You've also noticed that we have manholes, elevated manholes. That are running near or in drainage channels. That if those, um. Adjustment rings or the barrel sections themselves are leaking when that drainage channel fills up with rainwater, that rainwater literally just flows into our man. Flows into our sanitary sewer system. It overloads the system. So the whole purpose of the manhole project is to stop INI from getting into our, to our system. We're also putting in fiberglass inserts. If the, if the manhole is bad, we do have some brick manholes in the city. Which are, which are older manholes and deteriorated. Um, so any of the manholes that we're working on, we're basically rehabilitating them. Um, the contractor that we're using Southern Trenchless actually has some good experience in doing fiberglass inserts, which I'm a big fan of. There's no seams, there's no, uh, there's no joints on a fiberglass manhole and they will last for many, many, many more years than what concrete typically has been able to last for, for sanitary sewer.
And if, um, as I've learned and done some more research, the. That's our problem in Lamarck, our challenge in Lamarck, is when we have these rain events, whatever part of town, the reality is, in whatever part of town. If we have a manhole cover that, um, that is. In effect, open, uh, we have rising water.
Right.
That's where the rainwater is seeping into our sewer system.
I would use the word flowing rather than seeping.
Uh, flowing, flowing, flowing. And, and at times at various points, right?
Yes.
Wherever the flooding is occurring.
Yes.
In our, in our system. And when that happens. Uh, for example, then tying this all up, the right bonus connector, the left, that sort of thing, tying it up, going down. The side on the west side, the Garrett, the Prairie, the Partridge and the Volney, all those Longdale. That's some of the older ones on the west side system, on their system. And that backflow. That water accumulates, the pressure hits those lines, except even Williams, right over in your part of town. We dealt with some families over there. And that causes these, um, you've seen them in the yards, these.
Cleanups?
These clean out.
To blow up water?
To blow up water. And at that point, it's basically combined with raw sewage.
Absolutely.
At, at that point. And then at that point, then we also have a spill event. That we're, we are required to report to TDEC, correct?
Yes, sir.
And.
SDQ, yes.
TDC, I'm sorry, I've got different groups to the water quality people.
Yes.
And, and we may or may not be, uh, fined for that as well too, depending upon the response that we, uh, that.
We actually have been, there has been some violations. We're working through those violations and what they call, um, SEP agreements, which are, um. There, it's an environmental project that we're able to do. So we're spending the money rather than just paying a fine. We're actually spending the money. Um, to, to make repairs to the wastewater treatment plant. We did a similar project at the, the water storage tank. Um. So they, they allow us to do that.
So, so the, the, um, improvements then, that's why these. The work that's being done on our manhole covers is so crucial for all, for all of our citizens.
Yes, sir.
It also deals with that issue that we get just this past week. Also a couple of residents, you know, I talked about that with this water coming up, the, those things popping, whatever part of the city.
Yes, sir.
That we have. And, um. You mentioned that, my question, as I was doing some more research after we talked, what's the useful life for the, for the fiberglass?
You know, fiberglass on manhole is relatively new. I'm sure engineering would tell you seventy to eighty years. There's a lot of, a lot of the plastic pipe, a lot of the technology being used right now, like. High density polyethylene pipe. From the specs that you're getting from engineering, from the, from the salespeople are saying a hundred years. Nobody knows that, right? Because none of the stuff's been in the ground a hundred years. So it's all laboratory tested, um, but certainly fiberglass in itself. The problem with, with concrete manholes through the years is the, uh, the gas from the wastewater. Deteriorates the concrete, softens the concrete. So it actually causes a problem. Concrete manhole has been used for years, but. In reality, it's the most, not, not, not the most ideal substance to use. Uh, that's why there are new things that are being looked at, both composite type manholes. Fiberglass just happens to be one of those composite materials that are being used.
So anything that we can, that we can utilize that has a long. Life expectancy. I've talked about life expectancy before, is something that I, I urge us all to do. I learned. Uh, just, just riding around at, at the, um. Groundbreaking there in Mayan Park and Councilmember Larry and I were talking about this and he was helping me in that regard. Um, as a goal, the city should also try to utilize concrete as we, as we. Undertake efforts to repair our streets. Why? I was looking at that, that Mayhem Park, concrete was there when I. Was here in Lamarck in nineteen sixty-three. That thing predates me even out there and it's, and it's still useful. Uh, and, and, um, will probably still be there after I'm long gone too, on that side. And what, what's that? That concrete is a benefit to our city as opposed, as opposed to the asphalt, which we all get furious about because no sooner that we fill one pothole, there's another one that occurs. On the asphalt as well too, on that side. So, so, um.
And I'll, I'll add in real quick, just to give them some credit.
Because the next time this buzzer sounds, we're gonna move on.
Okay, that's fine. Any more questions on engineering?
Any further questions? Hearing none, we will, uh. We don't have to take any action on this. It says simply to consider. Uh, and so counsel, we choose to take no action and allow for this to be a plan for this proposed loan. Uh, then we can move to item, uh, eight.
So, but just for clarity purposes, we're, we're going to be proceeding. What's the next step on this?
Uh, council's already given us the approval to, for, to proceed. However, the question was asked for an exact.
Exactly.
Breakdown.
I would, uh, what I would suggest, we don't necessarily have to take action tonight. I would suggest that this be brought back if, if in fact there is some sort of approval. Uh, that this council has to act on to receive the loan. I would package this, uh, with that same agenda to make sure that the people. As they're following along are seeing what the council is acting on, not only a dollar amount, but work, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Rick. Item seven, eight wastewater treatment plant expansion project, approving a design, uh, change for the wastewater treatment plant expansion project. Uh, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, we have, uh, our partners here from Adura who would like to, uh, present an update on the project. And a recommendation they have made along with, uh, Rick and also, um, Annika is in the back. Mr. Brennan is here. Should we have any questions on this project? I'll ask him to take the floor with the presentation, then.
A couple of quick introductions. Rick Garcia, project manager. Um, they're overseeing the wastewater treatment plant and the lift station projects. Um, and Robert, uh, Viera. Robert Viera, a principal engineer with Adura. Um, so this project started, I'm going to try to run through this quickly. This project started back in twenty twenty. Um, originally, the funding for the project was twenty-five million dollars for a two-point-five MGD treatment plan expansion. There was also ten million dollars that was. There was also ten million dollars that was part of that grant to make improvements to the existing treatment plant. To get out of the floodplain. Early on, back in twenty twenty-two, possibly late twenty-one. The, the numbers that we, the preliminary numbers that Adura looked at for the treatment plant. The twenty-five million that originally was put in for that treatment plant was not gonna, was not gonna cover what it was gonna cost. We also looked at the fact that trying to do the work of the existing treatment plant, even with the ten million dollar grant, was, was possibly not feasible. So what we've done is we coupled the ten, the twenty-five million dollars with the ten million dollars, which gave us about thirty-five million dollars. To do the wastewater treatment plant expansion and the lift station project. So the lift station project. Is, is coupled together. With the wastewater treatment plant. The total amount of that, that project is about thirty-six million dollars, thirty-five to thirty-six million dollars. We've already put out a construction bid for three lift stations. About a million dollars apiece. So it's about three and a half million dollars to do the three lift stations that we're doing. They're three of our largest lift stations that we needed. They, they were in dire need of, of getting rehabbed. So that left us thirty-one million. To do a treatment plant. Adura went through the process of doing the design. We run a conventional treatment plant design. So I'm going to run through this PowerPoint presentation here a little bit because. What we're, wanted to show council and the public is what we're talking about and we're talking about making a design change. And these two fine gentlemen will be able to help me out if you've got questions. So, next slide, I guess. So basically, we run a conventional wastewater treatment plant. They're the most popular plants running right now in America. It's a process of variation, settling where we have, and all this is tankage, we, we aerate. Bio solids, what I call bugs. Microorganisms that are used to treat wastewater in a tank. We move that, that water to another tank. Where we allow settling to occur. So the solids, what we refer to as the solids, but it's a biomass. That's used to treat wastewater settles down because there's no, there's no activity. We turn off the air, it's, it's settled. The, the settled sludge gets pumped back to the headworks of the station because that is, is, that is our biomass that is doing all the work. They're our best employees. They don't, they don't ripe, they don't ask for more money. We just return them back to the front of the plant and they do their job. They work themselves back to the system. The clear water that's in the clarifier is what gets discharged to the bike. So that goes to another tank and gets disinfected. So it's a process and I think the next one, I've got a picture here. But basically. My, my little red doesn't, it works on the wall, but not on the, on the screen. So the dissolved oxygen is that first tank where the aerators at. Then it goes to a settling tank. We've got pumping costs where we have to return the sludge, the recycled biomass back to the headworks of the station. That's the process that we're using right now. There is disinfection included with that. It's not shown on this slide, but no matter what process we use here, we're gonna have to disinfect the water before we put it to the bike. Discharging. So the next slide. Is sequencing batch reactors have been around for. Forty years? Yeah, forty years. They're very popular in certain parts of the country, popular around the world. We are working with a contractor that's local here that actually manufactures, they, they, they. They're, they're manufacturer of S B R systems. Basically with an S B R system. Everything's done in one tank. So it's a batch tank. In order to do the process, I think we're designed with two tanks or three, three tanks. So we're able to move water through the system. But we don't have to have as, as much concrete in order to do the same thing that we're able to do with an S B R. I'll show a slide here. So basically, what happens with one tank is we bring wastewater in. We fill it, that's that static fill on the top. We rack, we put air to it. And the reason we put air to wastewater is it's really for the microorganisms and microorganisms in order to work needs air, just like we do. So there's living organisms. They need air, they do their job, they break down the, the. Waste water into a. Disposable liquid that there, that happens through that settling tank. So in that same tank. We, after we aerate the tank, we shut the air off. It settles in the same tank. We don't have to move it to another tank. We allow it to settle. And then after it settles, that decanter, right, which is my little pointer is not working, which is in the center of that subtle screen there. Removes the clear water and puts it off to disinfection. So it, it's, it's a biological process. We use the same biomass that we're using on a conventional activated sludge process. It's just doing it differently. And it's doing it in one tank. The advantage, we're looking at that, Adura looked at that, is the cost and we're gonna get to that here in just a few more minutes slide. So go to the next slide, please. So these are some of the differences between S B Rs and conventional activated sludge. There's no secondary clarifier. Those are huge clarifier basins that, that are. That we need in order to allow water that comes out of the aeration tank, it has to go to another tank to settle. With an S B R, we don't need to do that. We're able to do it in the same tank. So we avoid build, building clarifiers. Right now, our, our current plant has two large iteration chambers and two large clarifiers. A lot more concrete in order to, to build that. They talk about R A Z, so that's return activated sludge is what R A Z stands for. And, and the mixed liquor is the biomass that I'm talking about. The M L S S is mixed liquor suspended solids. With the conventional plant, you have to pump that, we got pumping costs, you have to pump that sludge that settles out in the clarifier back to the headworks. In an S B R tank, you just leave it in the tank. They settle, we take off the clear liquid. When that batch is done, things batch again, when that batch of water is done, that batch treatment is done, we bring in new wastewater. To that biomass, they go to work again, we aerate them, process starts over again. It has very good effluent quality. There's no short circuiting because of the way the systems are built. Everything has to run in one direction, everything decants out. There's no recycling filaments. I won't go into the type of problems that wastewater treatment plants have sometimes. Next slide. Real quick, once again, difference between S B R and the advantages, S B R's footprint is much less. Capital cost is lower. That's one of the things that we're approaching you tonight on. You're gonna see some numbers here. There's no R A Z pumps, there's no clarifiers. It's a simple process. B N R stands for biological nutrient removal. And it's a simpler. Commonwealth construction, which is what we're driving for here, these two gentlemen, with Adura trying to get the cost down on this treatment plant. Next slide. These are just some pictures from a plant that we visited. We did, we did do a site visit at a nearby plant that, that. Is by the same company that we're looking at. And they, they, these are the blowers that, that are used. They, they come, this, it's a package type plant. So when we buy all this, we're not buying different components. We go to one, one company. They guarantee performance, they monitor, it's all their, their control systems. We're not, we're not coupling different people together like we may have to with a conventional plant. We, we go to one company. They bring in everything we need to operate this plant. Next slide. Here's just some pictures. This is the tank. And, and off to the side there, that little blue, you're gonna see another picture of it is, is the decanter. So that, this system's under, under. Static or it's under mixing right now. So it's, it's, the wastewater is being treated. Next slide. That is a decanter. It's patented decanter. So one of the things with S B Rs is getting rid of the water out of the tank. Good clear water. This is a very patented decanter design that uses underwater weers. That drops down, controlled by a gear driven, a gear driven motor. It's something that Alpha Lavelle, thank you. Actually had a patent on, so very good decanter. That's very important in this process because that's. We have to be able to mute effluent qualities. So that's the clear water that we take off this, this. Process is really the key because all we're gonna do after that is put some chlorine to it, disinfect it and dump it to the body. Next slide. Just another picture of that decanter. That's in operation. You can see the clear water there. So the clear water goes actually underneath that float and goes into a pipe that you can't see on here. But that's how it, it, you can see some solids there. That's typical. When you settle the water, there's always gonna be some what we call floatables. That, those do not enter the, the effluent stream because of that water's discharging underneath. Next slide. And the brand we're looking at, like say is Alpha Lavelle, they are local in. Houston, basically, close enough?
Listen.
Yeah, and, and. See if there's anything I haven't talked about there. Underwater, wears raised, water level. Yeah, that's just a picture. You can go to the next one. Biological nutrient removal. I stuck this slide in there because this is a more complicated process. You understand wastewater's regulatory. So the biggest thing that wastewater, that T C Q is looking at is regulating two. Nutrient issues out of wastewater and that's nitrogen and phosphorus. And in order to get rid of nitrogen and phosphorus, the process sometimes can get more complicated. So this is a more complicated process. You can see there's anaerobic basins, an oxy basins. And then an aerobic basin, which is basically what we have right now. That's where we're adding air. But the reason that that's additional tankage that you would need with a conventional plant, with an S B R plant, you can do everything. Through and on and off air sequencing. With a, with an S B R. So it's the S B R systems in order to remove biological nutrient is, is much simpler and easier. Next slide. So meat and potatoes. Right now, Adura's got the conventional activated sludge plant, which is basically matches what we have right now. At forty million dollars. We have thirty-two million to work with. Thirty-six, sorry. So we're short. That's a breakdown of how they got those costs. It's roughly forty million. On the S B R design, next slide. Were about thirty-five and a half. We only have so much money on this grant. So I, I give credit to Adura on their efforts to, to make this design change and bring it forth to council. We wanted to inform you what we're doing. Admittedly, you've already approved the project. I don't know that anybody went into full depth back in twenty twenty about. All this technical stuff that I'm trying to bore you with. But I thought it was important that you knew that moving forward, what we're planning on doing is doing an S B R plant. Which is a completely different type of plant than we have right now. Does the same thing, treats wastewater. But we can build it for less money. We feel we've got good backing through Alpha, Alpha Lavelle, through their staff. And, and, and with controls. Because the S B R plant is. Technically automated. There is a, in your packet, there's a recommendation and a memo from, from Brent, from, from Annika that kind of talks through. The, the pros and cons. One of the things that we would need, that council needs to be aware of, is we need good operators like Davion Watts that was here tonight. He's been with the city seven years. He's learning a lot. He's got a lot more to learn. But these systems are. They're sophisticated systems. The plant we have right now is sophisticated. The S B R plant is more automated. So going forward, it's just a matter of making sure we've got good staff and good support.
Before I, I open this up, just a yes or no answer. Is this time sensitive?
I would say probably is in order for us to follow. I'm not, not extreme time sensitivity. But.
Yeah.
I would say it's something that we wanted to bring to your attention as soon as possible.
We have an extension.
Yeah.
We did just put another extension in with, with G L O for this project. So the, the money, the, the money, the, the city received the funding. Back in December of twenty-one. And so there's, there's certainly a timeline expectation from G L O standpoint that, that. We're doing what we're saying we're gonna do, which is use the money and, and do this treatment plant. It's been in design for a while, but we are doing the treatment, we are doing the lift station portion. A little bit from that standpoint, but, but I wouldn't want you to think that there's a long period of time. I'm not saying you need to make a decision tonight, I guess.
Yeah, I, I get it, Rick. We get it.
Yeah, we have, we have approximately two years since, actually, we were already at a hundred percent complete with the design of the conventional system. Then we approached the city and we worked, you know, discussing, we said, hey, this is probably the only option that we're gonna be able to fit within the city's budget. But with that said, we're gonna have to redesign the whole system and that's, the whole. Plans again, and that's gonna take us maybe four or five months. And we only have two years on this time extension. So construction is about another year, year and a half. So it is, I mean, we are, it is time sensitive, real time sensitive. I don't know as far as if you're looking at maybe pushing it back to another council meeting, but.
Yeah, you know, I, what I was gonna say, because I, I just wanted one answer, whether it was time sensitive or not, because, because we are, we are.
Definitely time sensitive.
We are. Okay, we get that. But, but we are also constantly being asked to act. On time sensitive pieces of material. It's a pattern and it's not good. And it seems to be coming from our public works. Side or our public works neck of the woods. This is a missed opportunity. We're talking about thirty-five to whatever million dollars. Of taxpayer money, right? Because we're all Americans and we all pay taxes to the federal government. It then becomes reinvested into our little municipality. And so we're talking about thirty-two million dollars of taxpayer monies. I, 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 it, it, I'm, I'm. Mystified as to why this is, this was not an item that was not workshopped, right? This is a missed opportunity. This could have been, should have been workshopped. Nobody understand, well, let me not say that. I don't understand hardly any of the things that you were describing. I'm, I'm not that type of person. I'm not a mechanically inclined person. So I don't know how many of our residents understood what you just described, Rick, i- if you can get what I'm saying. And who knows, let, let me finish and then I'm gonna open this up to council. And who said we as a city, that we wanted a sequencing batch reactor process? I'm sure there are more designs than just these two, but nobody asked us. We didn't get any feedback. And so what I'll do. Is I'll open this up to the council because I know that there are questions. We do understand this is time sensitive. But at the same time, this is thirty-two million dollars. And we wanna make sure that we have done our due diligence to fully understand the issue. So if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'm gonna open this up to council. I know Mayor Protem seems like you wanted to ask questions and. And so are there any other persons that would like to ask questions as well?
One of my questions.
We'll let Ms. Yansego, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Ms. Yanse.
One of the, the thing that you said was that it's gonna be cheaper than what was already budgeted. Is that what you said?
So initially the budget, when we first started off, this was before, you know, COVID, this was Hurricane Harvey. Back then, plants were, conventional plants were, you know, going at certain price. But with COVID and just with all the price escalation, things kept on just going up. But we were designing a plant, conventional plant. And just to make it clear, both these plants are exactly the same activated. I know as engineers and wastewater treatment plant operators, we get a little. Into our, our profession, it gets a little too, too difficult, but it's the same process. It's just a one is completed in one basin, so the footprint is smaller. So we're saving about a twenty-five percent worth of the concrete cost. So that's the two million dollars in savings. And then you don't have a clarifier, which is the equipment cost. So that's another two million. And then you don't have a clarifier, which is the equipment cost. So that's another two million dollars. So that's the only difference between the two. The two systems that one is completed in one basin and the other takes uh two separate basins. That's it.
Sorry.
But but going back, so this started back in twenty probably. Uh, so when costs were, you know, a lot lower, so then prices just started escalating. And we're pretty much done with the design, but we came back to the city and we said, hey, look, I know you, we know you want, you have. There's other items that you have to address and some of the lift stations, there's other items. You know, this, putting this project out to bid as the conventional system. We're thinking it's gonna run maybe somewhere in the thirty six to forty million dollar range. Well, Rick came back and said, you know, we won't have additional money in order to address some of the other lift stations. What other options are there? We said, well, let's look at S B R. You know, that's a smaller footprint. We think we can save. Three to four million dollars, but we still have to put it out for bids, so it. We don't know the exact number, but we just feel that confident that the S B R system. Would come out lower cost wise, capital cost wise than would a conventional system, which is the two basins versus one basin. If that answers your question.
So basically, you said there'd be four million dollars in concrete savings.
We're estimating two million dollars. If you look at the numbers, we're estimating estimating two million dollars in concrete savings because the footprint is smaller. And then we're estimating another two million dollars in equipment savings because you don't have a clarifier, which is just a whole bunch of equipment. The really, that's the only difference. Smaller footprint and less equipment. Process is the same, exactly the same.
But watch this, cuz you were saying that prices have gone up. So what is the difference from what we approved and what you're asking for now?
So when we put together this budget, it was Hurricane Harvey. What was that, two thousand seventeen? Uh, wastewater treatment plants of this size were about ten dollars per gallon. Now, they're at thirty, forty dollars per. So three, four times the cost. Of what we were estimating back in two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty. So.
And this is where the forty eight million dollars comes from.
Correct, correct. And thirty thirty, well, initially twenty two and about thirty two to thirty four was budgeted for the wastewater treatment plant portion.
Say that again?
Initially. About thirty five, thirty two to thirty four was budgeted for the wastewater treatment plant portion. And about six and a half was budgeted for the lift station portion.
What was it? Say that again?
So out of the construction project, right?
Talking original, right?
Original, it was thirty something, thirty two, about thirty two, thirty four was for the wastewater treatment plant. And you gotta remember, this wastewater treatment plant is an executive or or an order from the Texas T C Q.
Right.
So there's no way around it. You exceeded your the I N I.
Right.
Excuse me, I wanna be, I wanna be real clear because I wanna, I wanna understand you. You said the original design for the wastewater treatment plant was. Tell me that again.
Twenty two was for the expansion, twenty two million. Or twenty three and a half, twenty twenty three point five million was for the expansion, two point two five M G D expansion. Ten million was to address the existing wastewater treatment plant.
So you said basically twenty three.
Twenty three.
And you just said, Rick, which I'm not, I'm not disputing numbers, but you said twenty five. So we're talking about the same. Gotcha. Okay, good. I'm sorry.
What what's one and a half million?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that that's what I'm saying. I I wanna make sure we're talking about the same.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
It was proxy, and he has the numbers here, about twenty three and a half was for the expansion.
Got you.
Ten million was for the existing wastewater treatment plant. We're looking at addressing the existing wastewater treatment plant. But then prices started escalating, and then also G L O has a new requirement. That you have to elevate everything three foot above above the hundred year floodplain. So typically, it's just at or one foot above the hundred year floodplain. For some reason, G L O and their infinite wisdom. Is making everybody elevate three, everything up three foot above the hundred year floodplain. So. Yeah, if we use a G L O federal funds, we have to elevate it. So. Our platforms, we have to build flat platforms to to uh. Support the blowers. We have to build platforms for all the uh. Equipment. Uh, we have to raise the walls another two, three feet. So that keeps on increasing the price of things. In addition to the overall price escalation going on because of COVID and everything else, so.
Yeah, got you. Was that it, Miss Yanse?
Yes, right now.
Mayor Protem?
Anybody else?
I don't. Did anybody else have any question?
Yes. So have we ever done the sewer screen that we'd been talking about since I got on council a year and a half ago? Was that ever addressed in?
I think that's the bars.
You know, the bar screen. That's and that that was what originally that was part of this ten million that was in on this plan. So the bar screen project right now. Attico is working on. We have that project coming forward. It's about one and a half million. Um, and that's at the existing plant. What? G L O required was you cannot spend any federal funds at an existing plant if you don't do the flood protection, if you don't do the elevation. So we're planning what we've got earmarked right now for the bar screens is bond money. Or other funding that we.
So previously, we discussed with the three foot elevation wise, we cannot address anything at the existing wastewater treatment plant cuz it doesn't meet that three foot requirement. So we would have to elevate all the walls at the existing wa- wastewater treatment plant in order to be able to use the G L O money. So maybe, maybe about a year, two years ago. Uh, in discussions with the city, it was determined that the bar screen was gonna be. Since you can't use G L O money, they would use bond money in order to address the bar screen.
And I understand that I'm just. We would. Since I've been on council for a little over a year and a half, we keep talking about wastewater treatment, wastewater treatment. We've gone. And we take the same can down the same road. A lot. When are we gonna actually start working on the wastewater treatment plant? I mean, if this is the direction we need to go, then I'm good to do that. But dear Lord, let's do something because. Our residents wanna see a pin in the map saying. Bar screen is fixed because we've talked about it. I don't know how many times we voted on it in in this council meeting to get something done with.
Yeah.
So that that dark bar screen is a bond issue, I believe, that that needs to be brought up. I I'm as far as. As our intent, the wastewater treatment plant, like I said, we're at a hundred percent design, just going to conventional. Method, but we don't feel that that's the city's best interest. You know, if we put it out for biz and it comes out at thirty eight million, then we're gonna utilize all of those G L O funds in order just on the wastewater treatment plant. And there's not gonna be any funds left over for any additional wastewater treatment plant work. I mean, a lift station work. And we just don't feel that that's in the best interest of the city. And uh, we don't want anything to come out of the city's pocket, you know.
First thing. And and both of you repeated this, that you uh. But our needs on the wastewater side, the 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 plant itself. Is a requirement. We are under orders to initiate the repairs of the existing facility. As well as undertake the expansion as a result of the growth uh that the city has has had. And um, and then second of all. The location of our wastewater treatment plant is also challenging for us. Because it's next to the body of water that's used for recreational purposes for. For fishing and things. So that's, we've got those challenges there with regard to.
Correct.
To this. So I I just wanna remind council that that. This is a requirement. It's not a, it's not a, shall we do it or anything else like that? And having said that, I I for one am prepared to move forward because I I've tried to keep this. This was one of the first things that I addressed coming on council in twenty twenty. And it it was, it was such an excitement. I've worked with federal funds before, and I know it's not like this. There is so much, it took thirteen years, thirteen years just of advocacy to get. Some sort of mixed housing return to Galveston Island after the that that was destroyed. As well as the city itself too, uh when they rebuilt some of their facilities. So. The um. Uh, but and then you answered my other question. The three foot. Retainer wall or the increase, that's a new requirement. I wasn't familiar with.
That's only.
Because I I did have a question here. How about the mitigation for our blowers when I saw that picture? And now I have the answer. They're actually gonna have to be above the three foot a hundred year, all 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 equipped.
Our equipment will be on a platform, elevated platform. Which increases the cost.
So the 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 existing plant, will the existing plant also have to have the?
Cuz we're not, we're not utilizing any G L O funds.
So that's the ten million that you're gonna be utilizing then.
They're moving it over.
For this expansion.
And the new plant is. Three feet or actually five feet. I I mean, it's elevated from the existing plant, but it's the the plant, the the design that we have.
Yes.
Is elevated.
Yes. So the I guess, and then the next item is that. Since we're gonna under this, uh if I understood, this new technology. Well, it is a new technology, right? But but effectively, it's been been used for about four years in the area. That's what I heard someone say.
It's probably forty, fifty years. It's been used all over the country and internationally. You have them. Around here, you have a whole bunch of them. It's really not new technology. Uh, T C Q doesn't seem like. T C Q just sees it as, it's not innovative technology. It's just standard activated sludge process. And I don't wanna go into a lot of details. It's the same process. It's just, everything occurs in one basin versus, let's just say, two basins.
Well, and and that was my question. And that was my question. Part of it was addressing the comment that the mayor said, the question of. Why hadn't this been talked about before? Because I was curious to, uh but but the but the other, you answered my question there. Uh, we're not going to get into any problems with T C Q if we opt for this this amendment.
Actually, we had, we had a phone call meeting with them because before I proceeded designing a whole new system at my cost.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna run into problem, run into problems with T C Q. So we've already met with them. They're. They're aware of it and they're looking forward to.
Some email or got in writing and or just just dot your eyes and cross.
No, I I agree. Ultimately, it's gonna fall back on us. If something goes wrong, it falls back on us and we're gonna have to redo. Right, they permit it.
They have to, okay. Uh, and um. The the, wha- wha- what is, assuming we proceed forth? And you can do the uh the um changes that you need to on the on the planning of the. Loop the design work. How how long did you say the construction was gonna take? About another year?
Depending on lead times for equipment, I would think about a year, year and a half.
Mm hmm. And and Rick.
I mean, blowers, blowers in themselves, they're, I mean, it's eight months to twelve months just to get blowers in, so.
And.
They have to order those.
Rick, on the, at the, at the Mayhem Park. Just where, where would this expansion occur?
Directly north of the existing plant.
North of the exist, oh, so it's.
Lay into that field number four, that the S B R uh facility will take up less of that field. Uh, but there we'll lose some of that that outfield a little bit.
I think discussion, there's been discussions about converting it to a smaller field, maybe to accommodate.
And Adura's already designed, one of the things that we're incorporating with the new plan is bio solids processing, which we don't have for the existing plant. We're also putting in U V disinfection, which is getting rid of chlorine gas, which is a huge uh safety issue. So those design factors are kind of built in already. Those are, those are separate. From from this this treatment technology that we're talking about. So that that those designs pretty much. Are done. It's just a matter of mirroring in or putting in the S B R tanks versus the uh. Aeration tanks and the clarifiers, which they have designed right now with the convention.
But what is, is a sludge dewatering you're hiring? I think you bring in an outside company, right, to do the sludge dewatering?
Uh, fifty thousand dollars a year.
The city staff will be able to do that on their own cuz they'll have the equipment there on site in order to do that.
And thanks for the information. And just my final observation, the numbers don't change. We are short, the the numbers. We cannot proceed forth with this using the original. Uh, technology that 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 had been planned.
Correct.
Uh, this is in effect our only option. Uh, I I um. We have a a requirement to meet uh by. T C Q.
Correct.
And um, as I said, delaying this is not gonna be helpful in my mind. I'm ready to proceed. I defer to you guys. Also, you're the licensed professionals in this area. This is, and so if we have any problems, we're gonna come back to you as well too.
But sometimes we we make things more complicated the way they are, you know, trying to go into the whole process and things like that. But it's really the same process. It's. It's just smaller footprint. That's all it is.
Yeah. Um.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just have a point of order real quick? When 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 Mayor Potem just said it's our only option. Technically, technically, Mayor Potem, you have options, one or the other. You you have those options. The only difference here is that one would be more expensive than the other. I just wanted to just clarify that.
Yeah, yeah.
And two, the other thing that we haven't touched on, Mayor, is the recurring maintenance cost. A smaller footprint there. Does also hopefully reduce those, and I know that you would like to comment on that.
So as far as the recurring uh maintenance costs?
Yeah.
On your existing system or on the new system?
On on the new system, if 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 we were to switch to this type of system.
Well, uh, one is energy savings. You should see energy savings because the blowers are a lot smaller than the other system. And then two, you don't have, you know, there's a reduction in equipment. So you're not gonna have to, the maintenance and, you know, maybe in twenty, twenty five years. You're not gonna have to replace the clarifiers like you're having to do on some of the other, on the older system. So that's gonna reduce your uh your operations, your maintenance costs, and this your overall long term costs. Energy cost should should reduce. One, one thing I would like to say though, this, this is just an estimate. These two numbers I put on the board. I'm comfortable that the S B R would come out lower than the conventional. But these are just my best guess based off of uh projects of this similar nature that have bid recently. It still has to go out for bids, so those numbers, they're they're going to change. Hopefully, they change and they're lower cuz we have contractors. We're gonna do our 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 best and we we wanna try to at least get three, four contractors that are gonna bid on this project, but. It it's a little difficult in that it's, you know, it's a thirty, forty million dollar project, and there's only so many contractors that can bid on this size project. But the more contractors we have uh that are. Available to bid on it, hopefully the better prices we get, and it fall within that, within that range, hopefully lower, so we can address some of the lift stations.
Yeah. Um. Who did the original design?
So the original study was L J A. With the previous administration, they put together the report, put together a report, and that's where the conventional. Method came or system.
Where'd they get that twenty three? Whose number was twenty three?
That was from, that was from L J A, but at the time, back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, I have to admit that I. I was on board with that number. I I back then, it was. Twenty three million. I said ten dollars per gallon, two point two five, you know, twenty two and a half, twenty three million. So at that time. Before COVID. Ten dollars a gallon was about the going rate. For wastewater treatment.
And so are there, are there only two designs, uh only two ways to design this wastewater treatment?
They're, they're all activated sludge processes.
How many, how many ways are there though? Different ways? You you mentioned two, conventional activated sludge process, sequencing batch reactor process.
All activated sludge processes. I mean, but everything around here is an activated sludge process, everything. There's just different ways of doing it, and the only thing we're changing. Is instead of having a separate basin, a separate clarifier. It's. The aeration and the clarification is happening in one basin. That's it.
So I guess what I'm asking is, how many other designs are there outside of the convention? Activated sludge process and the sequencing batch reactor process?
So there's a whole bunch of other ones. You have a racetrack. It's still aeration, but it's a racetrack. The only thing with the racetrack is that you need. It's a shallower basin, so you need more area, more space. So there's probably uh best map. Five to seven, maybe.
I've been around trickling filter plants.
Well, yeah, you don't, you don't use strictly.
Rotating biological contactors used to be used. Most everybody has moved to extended activated sludge. Some people are actually using membranes for their clarification. We talked about that a little bit. They told me I was nuts.
Um, you said extended activation sludge. What is that?
Extended activated.
Is that something that's? Is that something that's in what we're talking about tonight?
It's it's same type of process that we're using.
Do you understand what I'm saying though, though? What what I'm saying is. We're being asked to consider something. And for me, one of five. I know very little about this process. Right?
Correct.
And and so it's, it it can be quite confusing. And and to be asked to make a decision. Uh, in the span of a fifteen to twenty minute conversation. Uh, in the span of a fifteen to twenty minute conversation, um, is, is a, a lot of pressure. And so that's why I'm asking you just, and it doesn't matter if they're fifteen or twenty million, but are there other designs other than these two? And that will be a yes, right?
Yes, there are designs, but we don't feel, in our opinion, our expertise, that those designs would fit within your budget.
Yeah.
So yeah, there, there's, I mean, you can, we can go a whole bunch of different routes, but those different routes will not. Bring you back to within your budget. And that's why we're, that's why we're bringing up the SBR activated sludge. Uh, yeah, method, I'm going to call it that.
So at some point, you guys, uh, a- and again, my, my, my conversation, uh, in this issue. Uh, has nothing to do with what you all have done.
Yes, sir.
This is about process and about the timeliness of being able to make a decision, um, in, in my mind. Uh, and, and so I'm asking questions from that standpoint, not to cast aspersions or blame, but to try to navigate this so that. We can have a better process, if you can understand what I'm saying. Um, when did you, you said something to the effect of. This conventional activated sludge process, uh, would cost in your estimation at least thirty-six million dollars.
Correct. We're estimating forty.
Forty, thirty-six to forty.
Thirty-six to forty, yes, sir.
When did you make that, uh, estimation? And this is an estimation that you have come to.
Maybe two, about a year ago, maybe. Uh, yeah, about a, maybe a year, year and a half ago. When we started the actual design process, because you have to remember, this is a, this is a, uh. GLO funded project, so there's an environmental process that has to take place first. That takes, I think it took maybe a year. Before that environmental process was completed. And then we can start the design process. Uh, so once we started the design process, prices were escalating. We brought it up to the city back then that, hey, you know, we need to move. We need to move the ten million that we had under the, uh, to upgrade the existing plant. We have to move that to the expansion. Because prices have escalated that much. So that's, that's when it went from twenty-three to thirty-three.
And when was this? About a year? Did you say a year and a half ago?
Maybe more than that, or maybe about a year, year and a half ago.
And when did y'all communicate that to our staff?
Well, about, about that time because.
Yeah.
We've been having meetings on this. We've done our due diligence for the past probably, what, five months? We've been talking about?
June, July, when did we do the, you know?
We did the tour in August. Yeah, we've been talking about, we maybe want to have our, our, our backup because this is where it's going. So when, once we did that, we've started really diving into it and we've, we've.
So we, we, we've been talking about for about five months going the, this meth, this route.
Yeah.
Want to do our due diligence, make sure.
When the final design was reached and because the target date we had was June or July, we originally were trying to go to bid in, 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 in fall. That's what we, that's what we've had. We told council that we were planning to take this project to bid, which we still could. So what happened was after, after they got completely done with the design and they. Ran through the numbers again, they were coming up with higher numbers. They talked to us about looking at doing design change. We talked about it internally. We did a tour at a plant. I was the one that said, if we're going to make a design change. This council and the prior council had no idea what we were building. No idea. You, that, when, when this project came to you, it was approved forty million dollars to do a wastewater treatment plant. I guarantee you, nobody went into depth like I'm doing for you. It was my, it was my decision. That if we were going to make a design change at this plant, we needed to share that with council. Did we need to? Probably not, because at the end of the day, you all don't care.
Well, we, well, 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 well.
As long as we're, as long as.
Apparently we do care. Uh, 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 apparently we do care, uh, because we're, we're having this discussion about the timeliness of this request.
Because the situation never came up before. Nobody asked what kind of treatment we were doing. They just said we were building a wastewater treatment plant. Nobody said, well, what kind of plant are we going to build? Those questions never came up.
That's because, that, that, that's because we don't know enough to know that there are more than one design. We're laypeople. A wastewater treatment plan is a wastewater treatment plan.
Right. So what I'm trying to share with council is that we are doing our due diligence by bringing this forward to you to share these ideas. And, and at the end of the day, what council has to hopefully. Acknowledge is the expertise from the engineering firms of what they're trying to do for the city. They're trying to save the city money. Because if we bid this project out and build the same thing that we have, the numbers that we're, we're looking at are thirty-six to forty million dollars. And that, to me, is a problem. So we took an innovative approach and said, let's look at doing something different. So that's what we're looking at as far as these SBRs.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're going to bring it into the board real quick, Rick. But, but here's the deal. In order to acknowledge. The expertise of this, this fantastic duo, I'm sure they're fabulous. We have to appreciate them. Is that right? So in order to appreciate them, we have to be made aware of their expertise in something that looks like a workshop. Perhaps four months ago, you said, you, you said that y'all made this decision five months ago. Maybe we should have had that workshop. Four months ago, we could have squeezed it in. Three months ago.
Make sure we were comfortable with it. And I even brought in Attico and Brent to make sure that our city engineers comfortable.
But who was gonna, and I promise you, I'm done with this, because, because we have to move on. Who was going to make sure that we, not, not us five? But the, but the, the twenty thousand that us five represent, who were going to make sure that we were comfortable with this?
I, I guess that's what we're trying to do tonight, sir.
Okay, last thing. I gotta get you. I gotta get you. Watch this, watch this, watch this. And then I'm, I'm, this is going to prove my point. Is this time sensitive? You want to have this entire conversation? That we need to have with the people of Lamarck in fifteen minutes on a lazy Monday night in the fall. Yes, I know.
I wanted to bring, I wanted to bring it forward. I understand your point, sir, that if you, and, 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 and Robert brought that up. That if you wanted to have in some internal discussion, we could have another workshop. We can bring in more information and make a decision in November. That's not going to kill us. It's, it's not. I don't want you to feel like. That the pressure's on you tonight, because I don't believe it's that hard a pressure. We wanted, I wanted to bring this topic to you. There was some discussion. Do we need to do that? It was my opinion that we needed to.
We wanted to dot our i's and cross our t's, check the TCQ, check the, uh, the GLO. Everything that we did, we've already done our due diligence to get through all this. We've already got the green light with everybody and now we just wanted to present it to you guys to make you aware of that. We've done everything we can to possibly save you money then, because if we go over, closer to forty million. Then the city would have to come up with under four million dollars. We know, we take it two-part. We're trying to, in the budget, trying to make, come in on the budget, so you guys have that double money.
Yeah.
Mayor, we understand what you're saying. We should.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it, it, it doesn't mean that it's, it's not a great idea. I'm, I'm just simply saying, we have to get better at the process so that we can have cha- a chance to. Actually weigh in on these from a, from a, an informed perspective is all I'm saying.
And we want you to, sir.
Yes, I know you do. I know you do.
Brought this for you. And, and, and we, there was, and once again, discussion, if, if we went to bid. Are the numbers wrong? Would the, would the existing plant come in at thirty-four million? We don't know, but if we go all the way through the bidding process, which is time and money and, and, and. To get through that process and it comes in at forty-two million.
Yeah, I got you.
Then what do we do? Now we got to go back and rebid the whole thing. So. As Robert says, there's no guarantee on these numbers. Anytime engineering's doing these, these pre-construction numbers, it's based on. Market out, market analysis and, and the best job they can do to say, this, you know, crystal ball, this is what we think it's going to cost.
Gotcha.
Now that, uh, one, two-year extension that we've already asked for, and if we go to the process and we have to re wait till everything goes through, that puts us three or four months behind. And then redesign it another six months. You're talking about another nine.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. Mayor Potem, did you want?
One comment and one question. But, but comment, Mayor. Um, this all occurred, by the way, in twenty twenty when the GLO awarded this. And, um, and we were also having the changeover in administration. I recall sitting down with these gentlemen, uh, here in the conference room because we had just undertaken. The meeting here and, uh, I guess I happened to be around and we had, uh, Chase leaving. The fire chief, not me, sorry, uh, Chief Aragon coming in, uh, as the intern. And they asked if I would sit in because they were looking for someone to sit in with you guys. And I heard about this at that time and, and, um. And based upon the, this, this conventional technology. No, no, no. I, 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 I remember that. So, and it, and it's true. It wasn't as in-depth as this. Uh, uh, well, here's my question. What's to prevent us from, um, from going ahead and going ahead with a bid process? Saying, asking vendors to go ahead and provide a bid on, on either, i- either one, right, or both of them?
We've done our, our due diligence. We've already asked two vendors to look at the plans that we had and they're said, they, they told us like. You can't keep that budget. You just look at it, give us some rough estimates and you're like, you're old, costing forty million dollars. So that's why.
No, that, that's, that's one that's. I mean, we could, we can put both out to bid, but that's not the, the existing si- or the existing way, the conventional method, if that's what you want to call it. We can put that a bid with the SBR, but we need to move on the SBR quickly so that we can have the plans ready to go out for bids. We don't have those plans ready to go out for bids yet.
So we, if we went, if we said put both of them out for bid, you just need, you just, tonight, you're saying you just need confirmation to move forward with. At least one of these plans. You don't mind us putting the other plan out for bid as well?
Well, yeah, at the same time though.
At same time. I got you. I, I got you.
Mayor.
They know what our budget is. They're gonna, they're gonna, they can choose. They're all gonna, and we can put both now, but they're gonna bid on that on SBR.
Okay, I got you.
I mean, we have the other, we have it a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got you.
We can put that a bid at the same time as the SBR and then you can just weigh the two options.
Got you, got you. Good point.
So what you're asking for is permission to draw up the plans for the SBR so that we can put them all out at the same time.
Yes.
Got you.
And one other question. Why were you told you're crazy for a membrane? Just curious in the clarification process.
That's my comment.
Yeah.
Uh, but actually.
I mean, but if I can make clean water at eight hundred feet underwater with a reverse osmosis in a membrane, I can, yeah.
Actually, whenever, actually, in this plant, we have, it's not a membrane, but it's a filter. We don't need it because, uh, the, our effluent is not as stringent as some of the others around here. But we will have an area set aside where if in the next go-around, whenever TCQ lowers the limits, because they're going to lower it sometime. There'll be a place set aside where we can put in a filter system that will clarify the water to a different level, a lower level. So that, hopefully in the future, they don't, but I'm pretty sure TCQ is going to come back and say you need.
I guess still has a lot of benefits to where we can get ready to.
For future required.
For future requirements. That is the beauty of the SBR.
Yeah, and that's.
Yeah. No, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, no doubt that, you know, I, I, I don't think that I'm saying, and, and, and I, I hadn't heard anyone else up here say. I, I believe we do trust your expertise. I think this is more along the lines of our, our community was believing and thinking one thing. Right? And, and even though they didn't know what that was, we didn't know what that was, right? We don't know the difference between the designs. We knew that there was a plant that was being designed, uh, and we knew that we were moving on it. There is now a, a, a possibility of a redesign, uh, and it's because of cost, right? So I'm saying that, uh, perhaps the community shouldn't understand that in, in that whole bid process. This was the original. These are the bids for this. This is the, uh, the SBR. These are the bids for this. So that they can see easily, whoa, we don't want that one anymore because of what's changed in those.
In a basin, I'm going to ask both of you.
Yeah.
The SBR has very, very better weight water quality.
Right.
You saw that in Kenan Lake. And so this, that's going to improve because your bio is right there. The body is right there.
Yeah.
That water quality is excellent compared to.
I, I just, it's not an innovative, I just want to make sure that it's not an innovative technology. This, it's the same process. It's just happening in.
Different.
In one basin versus two basins.
And I, and I, and I want to say it, I want to say it again. You know, we've worked with you guys over the years and we trust what you're saying. This is not an issue on Adura. This isn't even an issue on Public Works or even city management. We, we're talking about trying to make sure we have a better process.
I agree.
Right? So that we can have a chance to deliberate and that, that has very little to do with you gentlemen, right? I want to be clear that this is what we're talking about as a council. Uh, very little to do with Adura, a whole lot to do with this council, making sure that we provide a clear direction. That's all this is. Mister, Mister City Manager, uh, before Mayor Potem, I think, wants to make a motion. Before he does, did you say, have something you wanted to say?
No, I, it was already covered, Mayor.
Somebody, did somebody else have something? Okay, very good. Did you want to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to go ahead and move that, uh, we authorize Adura to, to initiate the, the revised plans. Uh, with the SBR, SBR technology and ultimately to go ahead and authorize, um. The city manager with Public Works to put out a bid for, for both. And, and see what responses we get that were fits within our, our funding.
Your budget, yes, yeah, our fund.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Again, thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your participation. I think that we've gotten educated tonight. Uh, so we'll move forward again with more education. Once these bids come back, you all can make it even clearer to us. So if there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Thank you. Item, uh, eight, City Manager's Report, Council, as always. Uh, I will, uh, go down the list to see if there are any items that we want to bring forward. Uh, tonight to, uh, take a closer look at. Eight, one, monthly statistics for September twenty twenty-four. What? Monthly statistics for what?
Uh, apologize, Mary, it was on the cover sheet. You're going to have on there, uh, police. Hold on one second. Sorry, let me get to the page. You have, uh, court, police, this is crime stats, public works and sales tax.
Got you. Item, anyone for item eight, one?
Public Works, yeah.
You wanted to do public work? Okay. I, anyone for item eight, two?
Is that the crime? I thought crime was the one.
I'd like to hear about sales tax.
So is that eight, one?
Yep.
Eight, one, we got two, eight, one. Anyone for eight, two? Cohort member of the Road to Zero Coalition. Anyone for eight, three? Clarity regarding coffee with a cop event. Very good. Let's now move to, back to item eight, one, since that's the only one we pulled. Mister Larry, you said crime stats. Is that what you said?
No, public works. Public works.
Public works. Well, Mister Larry can go first and then you had one as well on sales tax?
Yeah.
Mister Larry, you have the floor.
I just wanted to give recognition to Public Works, say thank you for the, uh, uh, it looks like District C, uh, kind of leads in the drainage channels being cleaned. As well as Culver's, um, D and C actually tied, but a lot of work, a lot of progress in getting drainage cleaned up. Thank you. That's been a huge, huge concern. Um, so thank you for attacking that. I greatly appreciate it. Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mister Ross.
Sales tax.
When I see the slide of things.
We're working on.
Cause it's.
Five, six, two. Yeah, there is.
Can you give us a breakdown there? Cause.
Yes, uh, councilman. So, uh, for the month of September, the closing month. Um, year over year, we were twenty-six thousand five hundred and sixteen below what we were a year before. Uh, still higher than where we were two years ago, but still nonetheless lower than last year for a decrease of four point three, closing at the year. At approximately one point three percent higher than we did the year before.
Well, overall higher still year over year?
Year over year, yes, sir. In, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, year, we were at seven million, one eighty-four, four forty-seven. On the twenty-three, twenty-four year, we ended the year at seven million, two seventy-eight, two ninety-nine.
Is that it, Mister Ross? Let, let me ask you this, Caesar. Has, have you or, and, and maybe this is not, uh, your purview, perhaps it might be the Economic Development Corporation. Um, has anyone from our, uh, from, from our organization? Um. Studied those numbers, those sales tax numbers as it relates to the, uh, forty-five expansion? Uh, there was a, a huge issue with the closing of the, uh, Delaney Road Corridor, if you will. Uh, and it provided for a tremendous negative impact on, uh, those retail, uh, organizations out, uh, in that area. Uh, have we, have we done any sort of, uh, study on that?
Uh, nothing per se. Uh, nothing per se for data specific. We have heard from some businesses that that were struggling at the time where that closure was. We did ask Tech Dot to expedite that opening, which they were able to do a little bit faster. However, we don't have the data to back up what and just more of hearsay, more from from the business themselves, saying that they were hurting during the closure. However, we could look into that matter.
So I'm going to say, uh, living in Seabrook, when they did forty five to Eldorado and Bay Area and all that, all those businesses hurt even during Christmas time. So and Tech Dot reimbursed businesses.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. That's good to know. Certainly, we can, uh, ask Gus to, um, at some point, look into that. Miss Yancy, before we move on, uh, we were at item eight. Looking at City Manager Report, is there anything you wanted to discuss on the City Manager's Report?
Eight, three.
Eight, three. Uh, I believe if Mister Ross is done with his, uh, question, you have the floor.
But it was crime stats.
Did someone ask for crime stats? No, no, I don't think.
I mean, I I thought I was confused.
Yeah, I was too. Yeah, I think we got it covered. Miss Yancy.
No, I just wanted to get some clarity on that in, on that incident that have that happened. This is so. So, uh, uh, unfortunate, but I thought it, we needed some clarity. Because, uh, Lamar PD was, uh, being un was being blamed for it and it got out in the community absolutely wrong. So, uh, City Manager, could you give us some clarity on that event?
Certainly. Uh, Councilman Yancy, uh, the Coffee and the Cop event that took place at, uh, Barcena is on October fifth. Uh, I I was not present. I was not able to attend. However, uh, Police PD did host that event there on site. And the understanding is that, um, from those that were in attendance was that folks were allotted to have either, it looks like a free pancake and or a coffee. And everybody in attendance was allotted the same opportunity to do those things based on these emails that I have as backup documentation and such, um. It looks like even some folks offered to pay themselves and when they, uh, said so to do so, they they were told that, uh, it had been taken care of. And everybody said it had been taken care of by the establishment at the time. Um, so after conferring also with the business themselves, uh, the document that states, uh, the, what the owner said um, that the event, um, that she, they were not aware of any incidents of anybody leaving without paying, um, and they were very quick to say there was an outstanding event and they had no issues with anybody not paying. Um, I hope that provides the clarity.
Yes, thank you very much. I know there was, um, some disinformation about that event. So thank you for for clearing that up.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Item eight, uh, four items for the good of the order. Mr. Garcia, do you have anything tonight?
Uh, I have two, uh, mayor, uh, if if you don't mind. Uh, one is actually having to do with Tech Dot, since we just spoke about it. I'm going to ask Kyle to please pull it up. It is, uh, an attachment that was there. Uh, we got it very, very late, right before we put the agenda out. And it's an update on the projects that are going on with I forty five. This was, uh, information that was shared with us from Tech Dot. Sorry, I was talking out of my microphone. Uh, and it gives some specific updates there on some of those bullet points. So some of the residents may like to, uh, review the information because it does talk about anticipated times. Uh, thankfully, knock on wood, we've had pretty good weather. Uh, so construction seems to move forward and it breaks down the components. So those first, uh, four bullet points address our construction projects that are shown there and exactly what the anticipated timeframe is for those projects. So from five seventeen to seven sixty, seventeen sixty four, anticipate that to be done early twenty twenty five. We will also share this through our social media channels for everybody to have. We'll also email this to everybody. I believe I already emailed it to all of Council as well, should anybody ask those questions. But we wanted also to make sure that this was out to the public so everybody knew this is something that Tech Dot made available to us. Specifically, the first four bullet points affect us.
And please remind them about the sidewalks on all the new construction.
Yes, sir. We'll we'll definitely do so.
Oh, I got you. I got you. Anything else?
Yes, I do want to have a a moment of, uh, a privilege here. Um, if I could ask Rick to approach, please. Um, Rick Saylor started with the city about, uh, right before, I guess, some of us, uh, took took the position. He was first here as a contractor and took the permanent position before I arrived. Uh, Rick will sadly be leaving us. Uh, he has announced that he'll be leaving us here, uh, middle of next month. And because of the change in the date of the meetings, uh, he will be leaving before our next meeting on the eighteenth. Uh, I wanted to have a moment to thank you in front of the body for all your work and your diligence for the past three years. I appreciate your your service to the city, but also I I felt it prudent to share that with Council.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We will miss you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
On behalf of this council, thank you for your service. On behalf of our community, it was a delightful experience to know you, to hear from you, to allow, uh, for your expertise to make the lives of our community members better. Uh, we are better for your presence here. And so we wish you well in your next endeavor. Uh, we wish your family well and great job, great job. Absolutely.
That is. Some folks in the audience did not know.
Yeah, very good.
I don't know.
Surprise to us all. Item nine, executive session, the City Council for the City of Lamarck. Texas reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss matters listed above as authorized by Texas Government Code, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, one. Consultation with attorney, five, five, one dot zero, seven, two. Deliberations about real property, five, five, one dot zero, seven, three. Deliberations about gifts and donations, five, five, one dot zero, seven, four. Personnel matters, five, five, one dot zero, seven, six. Deliberations about security devices, five, five, one dot zero, seven, eight, five, five, one dot zero, eight, seven. Economic development. Tonight, we will, uh, deliberate, uh, on three items. Nine, one, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, one. Consultation with attorney regarding potential litigation. It sounds like, is that A Hoosier? Is that correct?
That is correct.
A Hoosier versus the City of Lamarck. Nine, two, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, four. Personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an employee or officer, the mayor. Nine, three, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, four. Personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, council member, District A. Uh, and we will, Gus, uh, we will recess uh, from a regular meeting at?
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen, and we will enter executive session.
All right. Hello, we are back in session. We are back in our regular scheduled meeting at?
Nine thirteen.
Nine thirteen. And we will move to item ten, actions taken from executive session ten one, section five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorney regarding potential litigation. A Hoosier versus the city of Lamarck, Texas. I will entertain a motion.
No action.
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number call for vote, all those in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Item ten two, section five five one dot zero seven four personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer employee. Mayor, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion based on the evidence and information presented. And in accordance with the charter provisions of the city of Lamarck, I move that Keith Bell be removed from office of mayor for his failure to meet and or maintain the voter approved residency requirements.
I'm if.
Motion.
If if I may.
You may go.
The removal of any officer has not been noticed. Um, I, if you were to look at this agenda, that is not something that has been put out to the public. If that is something the council wants to consider. Then I would urge council to do that at a subsequent meeting and follow the ordinance ordinances regarding placing items on the agenda.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Uh, did you want to say something, uh, Mr. Ross?
I was going to say that I went to Galveston County tax, looked up the property taxes and mayor Keith Bell still has a homestead exemption in the city of Lamarck. Therefore, by state law and our charter, he is a resident of the city of Lamarck. And we can prove with a copy of a lease, a lease agreement payments. That the residency of Mayor Bell is actually not in the city of Lamarck. So, um, if you guys want to table this. Once again, the mayor at Galveston County property tax, you can go look him up, Bell, Keith. It shows that he still has a homestead in the city of Lamarck. Until the day he does not have a homestead in the city of Lamarck and does not have a lease in the city of Lamarck at that point in time. He is considered a resident by state law and our charter. I would make a motion that we no longer bring this up until evidence proves. By the fact that the mayor does not have a homestead in the city of Lamarck and there is not a lease for a residency in the city of Lamarck. That it never be brought up again.
I'm so sorry, councilman. There is currently a motion on the floor.
No.
The second.
Thank you.
Point of order. The motion, there's the motion itself.
The motion, the motion is on the floor. I, I, I strongly suggest council take no action on that motion. I think that's what Kiara is getting at.
Thank you.
But Kiara is requesting that council formally dispose of, formally do something with that, not just have me say, you can't do that.
Uh, 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 so let's, so, so let's, let's, let's entertain, uh, Mr. Lowry's, uh, motion. Is there a second to Mr. Lowry's motion?
And, and, oh, well, no, no, I, I think what, what Kiara is asking, I believe, is councilman Lowry made a motion and I said, it's not. For lack, it's not, there's not been adequate notice of it. So what Kiara is asking is we need to dispose of that somehow, whether that's. The, um, the council saying, we agree with you, Gus, that's not, we're not doing that, or whether that you mayor doing that, or whether that's.
Well, let, let, yeah, yeah.
Somebody.
Let, let me do that. We are going to move forward, uh, on Mr. Lowry's motion on the advice of our attorney. Uh, and so that kills the motion. Uh, we cannot, uh, move forward illegally with an illegal motion to your point. Uh, and so now I will recognize, uh, Mr. Mark, Mr. Ross, did you want to make that motion again?
I would like to make a motion that until the mayor Keith Bell no longer has a homestead exemption in the city of Lamarck. And once it is removed, if he does not produce a lease for the city of Lamarck, that then. Otherwise, this motion is dead and should not be brought up again.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Uh, let me share with you guys. Uh, we've been at this for about two years now with Mr. Lowry, uh, and this same accusation. Uh, Mr. Lowry knows that, uh, this accusation, uh, can't move forward for a variety of reasons. Let me just list a few of them here for you tonight. He knows this. Uh, my voting registration card is in the city of Lamarck. My voting record, uh, has been with the city of Lamarck. My driver's license, uh, is addressed to the city of Lamarck. There is a deed to the home that I own, uh, in the city of Lamarck, and there is a homestead and most important, most important, most important, my physical presence at the location. Mr. Lowry cannot tell me when to enjoy my properties, however many properties I have, he can't tell me when to enjoy them. He knows that. He's been to attorneys, uh, to try to get me removed from office. He's even said that he was going to raise, uh, money that nobody knows where that money went. Uh, for an attorney to get me removed from office. He's tried to recall me from office. He's tried to run people against me. He said that he was going to run for mayor. If I was illegal and ineligible to hold office, seemed like to me, that would have been the easiest victory of them all. David, he wouldn't even had to contend with you. He could have just showed up at the mayor's race and said, hey, you don't even live here. And then he, now I'm speaking now. I let you talk. I'm speaking now. I let you talk. I let you talk. I'm speaking now. Gus, can we please have him recognize that I'm speaking now?
Explain.
I'm speaking now. Mr. Lowry, Mr. Lowry, you are out of order. That's the first warning. You're out of order. That's the first warning. You're out of order. That's the first warning. Mr. Lowry, I'm reclaiming my time. Now, like I said before, you're out of order the second time.
Copy of your payment.
Mr. Lowry, you're out of order the second time. Mr. Chief Wagner, are you in, in charge? Let me, let me do this. Uh, he needs him to, if he continues, he will be removed from this dais. Immediately.
Yeah.
If he continues, he'll be removed from this dais. We're not playing. If he continues.
The, the lease.
Can we proceed? Can we proceed in having him removed from this dais?
We would have to.
Thank you.
So what we're going to continue to do now is we're, we're not going to even, uh, concern ourselves with continual accusations that have not. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking, sir. I'm speaking. I am speaking. I'm, we need to have him, let's have him removed, please. Let's, let's, let's have him, let's have him removed. Let's, let's have him removed. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to continue to allow him to continue to be out of order.
Just tell the truth.
I'm not going to continue to allow, I've told the truth and I'm not going to, I'm reclaiming my time, sir.
And here's.
I am claiming reclaiming my time. I am responding. I was speaking and you are continuing to disrupt me. I let you, I let you speak, sir. I let you speak. And I've asked to reclaim my time.
Oh, you just.
I let you speak and I've asked to reclaim my time.
Tell the truth.
I let you speak and I've asked to reclaim my time. Mr. Garcia, the next time I ask as a presider for someone to be removed from this, this property. If they are out of order, I would, uh, I would think that you would then move toward that.
Can we please have a recess so we can handle this situation? That's, that's by the procedures that we.
If he interrupts me one more time, we're moving to recess. Now, like I said before, and this is what he, nobody, he does not want any of us to hear the truth. Now lawyers have looked at this, right? He's tried to recall me behind these types of allegations and nothing, nothing, nothing works. It's time to move on. Again, I've given you five or six reasons. Everybody in this room with my physical.
Explain the leak.
We're gonna stand, we're gonna stand in recess. We are back in outside of a recess. And as I was continuing in my response, uh, this has been a matter that has been discussed for the better part of two years, clearly. Uh, it is not a matter of merit in any way, shape or form. Uh, if it was a merit, a matter of merit, uh, then there would have been movement on it prior to. Uh, if there was, uh, any, uh, any serious thought, uh, that this is a legitimate issue, uh, then persons who are making this issue, the claim of this issue would have ran for mayor. Uh, so we realize that this is not a serious issue. What it does do, uh, is it continues to prove the point of divisiveness. Uh, every meeting, there is a, a, some sort of a issue, some sort of a fight, some sort of a, a challenge. Uh, and here's the thing that I will say, uh, to that. I've been on this dais for 20 years and I have managed in those 20 years to get along with everybody on the dais. In 20 years, I got 20 years of a proven track record that I can get along with people, that I can talk to and respond with and work with other council members. Ms. Yancy has about three years, uh, maybe three and a half years now on the dais. Uh, had proven that she can work with people. The only one that has not proven that they can work with anybody is Mr. Lowery. Now, instead of bringing accusations about residency that cannot be proven, that are false and that have nothing to do with what the law says. I made a list of things that perhaps we could be working on, but we wasted this time. Let me see, uh, the citizens, the residents of District C wanna know, uh, what's happening with the land the railroad owns, uh, over off of Highway three and Main Street and 45. Uh, I believe you just had a town hall meeting and in that town hall meeting, I don't think that one person asked you about my residency, not one. Also, District C has issues with drainage. We didn't talk about that. We talked about residency. Omega Bay is still trying to search for answers and dredging their, their canals. They're still searching for answers in repairing their streets. Police patrols continue. Obviously we're still hiring officers. We need to increase, increase police patrols. District C has had a heck of a time with speed bumps, uh, as well as street signs. Uh, and, uh, the commercial vehicles that roll through 519 on a regular basis, uh, continue to persist. That's seven or eight things that we could have talked about that would benefit the people of Lamarck and the residents of District C. But yet we continue to talk about some of the same accusations and same issues that do nothing but serve to retaliate against people that some of us believe have offended them. And it's time out for that. This is a place to govern. This dais is a place where council members work together to solve not problems that we have with each other. That's off the dais. We work together to solve problems that the citizens, the residents of this great city have with the city services that they are being provided. Nothing more, nothing less. Uh, and so that's my comments. There's a, there's a, a, a motion on the floor. There's a second, uh, and we're gonna call for the vote. All those in favor?
And if I may, Mayor.
You, 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 you had a chance to speak. We're moving toward the vote. I've called a question. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's move on now to item two.
If I may, Mayor.
Uh, let's move on to item two.
We, we agree.
We're moving, we're moving on to item two.
We agreed to speak.
We're moving, I'm presiding. We are moving on now to I, this, the item three, actually. We're moving on to item three. Let me read it, uh, and then we'll go ahead and, and discuss if need be. Item 10, three, section 551 dot 074 Personnel Matter. For the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, Councilmember District A. Uh, is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion of no action until next week when we have a chance to sit down with the Citizens Police Academy and the Chief of Police, or not next week, next meeting when we have both of them sitting before us. So we can ask about that incident and other things that are on residents' minds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion if I can to.
There's a motion on the floor. We have to vote on this motion. You can make a comment.
In regards to the allegations that were, um, made by several people that were present, I think that it would be appropriate for a censor. And I think it would be appropriate to have a public apology written to the officers involved and, uh, to the board members at the LMCPA.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any further comments from any, uh, person here tonight on the dais? Hearing them, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item 11, Requesting Announcements. Requested by Mayor Councilmembers for items to be placed on future city council agendas and announcements on city events, uh, community events. Texas Government Code 551 dot 415. Uh, B Items of Community Interest Include Expressions of Thanks, Congratulations, Condolence. Uh, two, Information Regarding Holiday Schedules. Three, An Honorary or Salutary Recognition of a Public Official, Public Employee or Other Citizen. Except that discussion regarding change in status of a public, a person's public office or public employment is not an honorary or salutary recognition for the purposes of this subdivision. Reminder About An Upcoming Event Organized or Sponsored By The Governing Body. Information Regarding A Social Ceremony, Community Event Organized or Sponsored By The Entity Other Than The Governing Body That Was Attended Or Scheduled To Be Attended By A Member Of The Governing Body Or An Official Employee Or Municipal, Uh, or County, official employee of the municipality, excuse me, or county. Uh, item six, Announcements Involving An Imminent Threat To Public Health And Safety. The People In The Municipality Or County That Has Arisen After The Posting Of The Agenda. Mr. Lowery, you are up first.
Um, I'd like to put on the agenda next week if we could residency. And I can, uh, provide again to council the, the copy of the lease for Mr. Bell in Houston. Um, I can provide a recording if we could get, uh, Mr. Hunter to download it so we can actually listen to the interaction of the private investigator, uh, that, that did the investigation and, uh, prove where the residency of, of Mr. Bell actually is. And I would also like to prove with the, the checks that we have copies of, uh, payments. If we could just put that on the next agenda so we can speak about it publicly and let the, uh, taxpayers' voice be heard, that'd be great.
Well, we can't do that because we just made a motion and passed it and you, you actually were here for the vote. Uh, Mr. Ross just said that we are not bringing this up anymore. You did, you were here for that vote and so that's not gonna happen. Do you have anything else?
Just request to bring it up.
Okay, well, that's not gonna happen. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Uh, yes, so the light at Cedar and Highway three, uh, Cedar side. Like to have text dot kind of readjust the times on those a little bit. Give us a few extra seconds to get across Highway three instead of three cars. And then the light at the turn light at Main Street and Highway three is you're coming from 45. I really hate sitting there for three light cycles before it decides to turn green and I can turn left on the Highway three. Really angers me. Halloween night, I invite everybody to come out for a little trunk or treat at the VFW 5:30. If you wanna bring a car and some candy and stuff, please. Think we had four cars last year. Like to at least get up to six or eight. That'd be really cool. And then November 10th, starting at 10 a.m., we're gonna do the Veterans Day Breakfast. As long as we can get the kitchen up and done, better than we did last year. Uh, so please come out and support that. It was a great time, a lot of fellowship, uh, people talking with other veterans that they never would have thought was a veteran or people around, had some decent food. It was a good time for all. If you would like to donate to the VFW to help them out with the cost of eggs and bacon and sausage and stuff, please go up and see Angela Ren. She will be happy to take any donation. She will be happy to take any donation. I believe there's a website you can also go to and it has a donation button on it. I think it's VFW eight two four eight dot org. Can't remember off the top of my head. But yeah, that's all I have right now.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Yancey?
Yes, um, Caesar, could, could you, uh, I know we had talked about that, uh, safety light on Delaney. Study, I mean, remember we wanted to see, and I happened to stay over there about two hours and saw that it is a lot more traffic there. So I know we had told them that we would try to do that. I think we did in January, three or four. I think when Tink was here, they did it once and I, I don't think we've done it again. So maybe now that'd be a good time to do that. Right, mm-hmm, in that, in that area. And we're still trying to do some type of give back with Amazon for Thanksgiving. So we can get that with the, with the new guy. We've never done a ribbon cutting or anything like that with them. The lake, there are a lot of signs on Lake Road that need to be replaced. A lot of them are damaged or bare. And also in District C, along the Houston Fannin routes. Those lights need to also be, um, I'm not saying, we have a lot of signs over there that needs to be replaced. And a light needs to be replaced at the corner of Fannin and Westwood in District C. So that, that whole little area right there, a lot of those signs are out, just so you know. We're still trying to find a, a road to, to name after Kate Bailey Hudson, who's from Lamarck and she was the first female senator. And I think we need to honor that as well as, um, it was brought to our attention about a year ago about renaming the library after Jordan Sam. And I know we, we haven't brought that back. I think we should. The other thing is I, I do want to try to get a meeting with you, myself and Gus and Jack Rhodey from the DA's office so we can understand proper protocols for disorderly conduct in a council chamber. And what we, what, what we should do. I was a little disheartened to see how that, uh, happened today, but glad that we could try to reconcile. But when it's, when, when, when we don't, um, there has to be order. We don't have order, you have chaos. And I want to make sure that our residents feel safe when they come to this, this council and that they also know that there will be orderly conduct. So let's try to get that meeting ASAP. Other than that, you all remember to go vote the next time that we meet in these chambers. We will have a new president and elect, president elect, I'm sorry. Whichever way it goes, but I do hope it goes better than what it went tonight. So I ask that you all just continue to pray and forgive us. This, we have to get back to governing as the mayor said, but thank you for the ones who do pray. And I do pray for peace and restoration and reconciliation because we are neighbors. And there are people that want us to live in virtual divisive worlds, but all of us live 10 minutes away from each other. And we can knock on the door and say hello because we're neighbors, we're friends, we're family here in Lamarck. And we, we need to strive for that. That needs to be our number one goal. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Let, let me say this. I think it's important that we continue to move forward with governing our city. I think that we keep the focus on that. Clearly there is attempts to distract and bring division. We see it. As I said before, uh, for 20 years, 20 years, I have worked with council people and different councils. That's proven. And so we all need to endeavor to, to prove that we can, we can do that. There is an election that will happen Tuesday, first Tuesday of November. And we will decide a precedent. Congress, governors, senators. One side will be extremely overjoyed. The other side will be distraught. The world will seem like it might end. But that next day, that Wednesday, let me tell you what, what will, what will certainly be there waiting on us Wednesday. That Wednesday, we will still have sewer problems in the city of Lamarck. That Wednesday, we're still going to need more, more police officers. That Wednesday, our playgrounds will still need more inclusive playground equipment. Our streets will still need to be repaired. This government, municipal government, the 30 years of experience that I have in it, 20 as an elected official. Staff member. Volunteer. Municipal government is such an opportunity for us to advance the cause of the citizens, the residents of the communities which we serve. It is the one point of relief that we might be able to experience with our government. This is the one place that we can actually go and say we have potholes that need to be repaired. And actually see from the representative, through the manager to the ground, see the process happen from us initiating it. That is not a Republican or a Democratic thing. That is democracy at work. And that's what we are here for. We are here to help repair potholes, to add fire officers. Drainage. We are here to make the lives of our community members better. We are not here to divide anyone. We are here to unite our community. To provide services for that community. I wanted to congratulate the young men earlier today, uh, that, uh, the two young men in the Public Works Department at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, I remember a time where we had to outsource our wastewater treatment management operations. And now we have two talented individuals, award winning individuals, uh, in our wastewater treatment plant operation. And they are our employees. A tremendous step forward and I wanted to honor their service tonight and appreciate them for their willingness to serve our great community. Veterans Day, certainly we want to acknowledge the, uh, the work of those veterans that, uh, served our country with distinction and honor, uh, that have, uh, made us safer. We want to acknowledge their contribution and certainly we want to encourage each and every one of us, if we're able on January, excuse me, November the 10th, to participate in our, is our, our third annual, is that right? Veterans Breakfast. I wanted to also say that there was, uh, there was a wonderful experience that we had at Bayou Fest. On Saturday, I was able to get out for the morning. I had some issues with allergies, so I had to go lay down for a minute and I got out at the end for the All America City celebration and I paid for it. Uh, certainly it knocked me back, but that was okay. It was okay. We, we certainly wanted to support. Consequently, I wanted to send my, uh, congratulations to, uh, our residents in our community. And the community members over, uh, uh, at Mayhem Park, those that will enjoy that new boat ramp. It's a wonderful, wonderful photo op. Did you see the photo op? See the people out there cheesing with the? And then the battery storage, there's a battery storage. Data storage, excuse me, data storage. That, that was groundbreaking and I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem for stepping in. Again, many of you know this is allergy season and we are not friends. And so as we move forward, uh, in the trunk or treat, yes ma'am, the trunk or treat, uh, last Thursday. Again, always a wonderful, wonderful event for our young people. A great example of partnership between Haley Elementary and the Lamarck Public Library. Wonderful event as always. Caesar, what I would like to ask you to do at this time is to give us, uh, more information on our upcoming block walk and town hall. Everyone has had their town halls and so we are going to now do something a little different. Instead of me having a town hall, uh, what I am asking us to do is to, to walk the blocks that morning. To knock on doors as a council and as staff members. To see what the people of the, the community think and believe about the jobs that we are doing. The areas that we can improve in, the questions that perhaps they may have, uh, to be answered. That would be the first part. The second part is we will then retreat back to a location and have a traditional town hall. Is that right? Uh, and so we're coming, we're going out in the community and we're returning. Did you want to elaborate on dates and times?
I do apologize, Kiera is not here. She's been working on leading that project, Mayor. So if you allow us to property market that so we can get out to everybody, but I do know the intent to have that before the holidays. Democracy on your doorstep is what it's going to be called, so just be here on campus for democracy on your doorstep.
Democracy on your doorstep. You heard it here first in case some of the, our sister cities want to, uh, well, we won't go there. Mr. Garcia, did you have anything before we go?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Very good. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, stand adjourned.